This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Friday, April 21st. Council meets three times a week, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, and all meetings are open to the public. For those of you that can't make it to City Hall, meetings are televised via cable on Channel 35 or can be viewed by visiting our website. I'd like to ask Councilmember Cardenas, Councilmember Weisar, Councilmember Padilla, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Weiss, and Councilmember Zine for them to make their way down to City Council. As is custom, on Friday, we do have presentations this morning, and we do have several of them. That's why we started early today at 9:00 a.m. If I could ask Mr. Garcetti for our first presentation.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and very good morning, colleagues and members of the public. Today is one of those solemn commemorations that we stand tall and stand proud to do each year, but we do with sadness in our heart and heaviness as well in our spirits, in which we commemorate this year, the 91st anniversary of one of the most terrific periods in human history, the Armenian genocide. And we say as a city that is the second largest Armenian city in the world, that we will speak the truth and that we will restate history so that there's so many souls that were lost, there's so many voices that were silenced, are remembered and are silent no more. I'm joined today by a number of people from Armenia and the Armenian community, our Council General, Gagi Kirakosian, and members of the Armenian National Committee that are here and Armenian clergy that have joined together with Armenians and Armenian Americans throughout Los Angeles, throughout this country and throughout this world over this weekend to commemorate the passing of almost one and a half million souls, men, women, and children who were killed between 1915 and 1923. We know that there are those out there unlike some other horrific genocides in our time, Rwanda genocide, the Holocaust in World War II, where people have admitted that that happens. There are still those who deny that a genocide indeed ever even happened in Armenia. There are those that claim that this was just a conflict of war and that people died on both sides, but the numbers are irrefutable. The memories, the living testament of people who are survivors still today, as we still do have survivors in our midst, should for all time refute any claims that this did not happen. So every lie that is said, we have to speak the truth even one more time. Each year when we all sign on to this, colleagues, we establish one more document for the record that says that even if our federal government has not yet officially recognized this, that a genocide did occur, and that the only way to heal, not only for the Armenian community, but indeed for the Turkish community, for the entire world, is to embrace that that happened, to recognize that that occurred. And so today, as we see, we know that if we deny one genocide, that that plants a seed for many more in the future. Indeed, it was Hitler who said, "Who remembers after all the Armenians?" before he began his murderous ways. So we say here today, therefore be it resolved after we state the history that we know to be the truth, that by the adoption of this resolution, that the City Council of Los Angeles, along with the mayor, city attorney, and city controller, join the worldwide commemoration of the 91st anniversary of the Armenian genocide, and call upon all other local, state, and federal entities and officials to also commemorate the tragic suffering of the Armenian people and to acknowledge this horrific tragedy for what it was, a genocide, the first recorded genocide in modern times. I'd like to right now call on Susie Zerunian, who is a board member of the Armenian National Committee, to say a few words as well on behalf of the committee. Please welcome.
Mr. Garcetti, before she has an opportunity to speak, I know Mr. Rosendahl would like to say a few words. Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Good morning, and thank you, Mr. President, for bringing this out in the light to all of us. And I want to say that we're in another genocide right now in Darfur in the Sudan. These genocides happen, and people don't want to acknowledge it. Obviously, the Jewish community on the planet said never again to the Holocaust that Hitler created, and we should obviously say never again to what happened to the Armenian people. And to hide that in the dark for so many years is an outrage on the earth. And I just want to dedicate this moment not only to the Armenian community and to the year 1915 to '25, but to this very moment in the Sudan where hundreds of thousands of people have been gathered up and put in a certain spot. And for the last three years, the world has talked about it and done nothing, as thousands of people are being genocided in the Sudan. It's an outrageous situation. So in memory of the Armenian genocide, the Holocaust of Hitler, and right now, we're in another Holocaust. So we should keep a very strong, absolute outraged feeling about genocides, and God bless the Armenian people on the earth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl.
Reverend clergy, honored guests, my fellow Americans, we gather today not to speak about the denial of truth, but the denial of justice. Not to speak of our past, but our future. Not to seek an apology, but to recommit ourselves to the fight for justice. We fight for justice because we know, as moral beings, in our hearts, in our souls, the difference between right and wrong. We fight for justice because we know, as students of history, that our world is more dangerous by virtue of Turkey's denials, the murder of a nation with impunity. Lessons learned by the Nazis, the Khmer Rouge, put into practice in Rwanda and today in Sudan. Lessons that we, as children of this crime, as sacred trust, must use in ending forever the cycle of genocide. We fight for justice because we know that Armenia cannot be saved as long as Turkey remains an unrepentant, unapologetic perpetrator of genocide. Turkey's denial represents a chilling warning, a sword over our heads, that because Ankara considers its brutality 91 years ago to have been justified, it reserves the right to defend itself in similar ways in the future. We fight for justice because as believers in redemption, in the hope of rehabilitation, we hold that people of Turkey deserve better than to live in genocidal state, one that answers the world and its own citizens with violence, aggression, and fear. And finally, we fight for justice because we believe in our future. On behalf of the Armenian community of Los Angeles, the Armenian National Committee of America, we are here today to thank the city of Los Angeles, Mayor Veragosa, and the City Council for its support in the struggle for justice and for taking time to commemorate, to remember the 1.5 million Armenian men, women, and children who were brutally murdered at the hands of the Ottoman Turkish government starting on April 24th, 1915. In front of you, you will find a DVD, The Hanjin Story, an award-winning documentary on the Armenian genocide, and a book, The Armenian Genocide, a compilation of international documents on the Armenian genocide. Thank you.
Thank you. And, Mr. Garcetti, if I could add my words as well to recognizing the genocide, and that the City Council has gone on record many, many years recognizing and acknowledging. And for those of you from the Armenian community that are here today, how important it is to continue that fight to get Turkey to recognize the genocide, and that so many of us here who represent a growing population of Armenians, and Eric and I always challenge each other, who has more Armenians? I think I do in my district. But the importance of the recognition and know that this is a solemn day and one in which people all across the world in this weekend to remember what happened, and most importantly, to never forget. So thank you very much for being here today. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Wendy, and thank you for your support of the community throughout. Council General Kirakosian, would you like to say a couple of words? I know we're right about it time, but if you'll indulge us for a couple of extra seconds. And also, we really are excited, Susan, your words about looking towards the future, that Los Angeles and Yerevan, the capital, the largest Armenian city in the world and the second largest Armenian city in the world are being paired together as sister cities from the trip that we took last summer. And we invite all council members to be a part of that ongoing process and a way of strengthening our friendship together for the future.
And, Mr. Garcetti, sorry, one of our colleagues, Mr. Cardenas, would also like to say a few words before here from the Council General. Mr. Cardenas.
I want to thank you for your strong words and your statements. I focused on something that you said about them ignoring that this occurred and somehow it ever being justified. For the sake of all men and women of today and tomorrow and all children, such an atrocity should never be ignored, and it cannot be justified. So I wanted to thank you for coming forward and showing us your strength and your resolve to want to make sure that everybody understands what did occur, and that it should never, ever happen anywhere on this planet ever again. And we should recognize, as we are here in City Council, as we do in our state capital in California, and also, hopefully, we'll get the proper recognition from this nation with our Congress to make sure that we set this right once and for all. This is a struggle that should not continue. So I want to thank you, Eric, for bringing this forward, and we'll do this over and over again until the whole world and this country understands that this should never, ever occur ever again. And this did occur, and it shall not be ignored, and it cannot be justified. Thank you.
Thank you, Council General.
So, as I don't want to break protocol, I know, I'd like to be very short as a representative of my country. I want to just say thank you, all of you, as good friends of Armenia, as authorities of the city of Los Angeles for this great opportunity. So thank you again, and looking for the great hope for the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. I'd like to acknowledge now, Mr. Wesson, for our next presentation.
Thank you, Madam President and members. Today is a great day because this is Pet Adoption Friday. I'm joined by the great councilman from the 11th District, Bill Rosendahl. This beautiful dog that we have here, named Gina, is one year old. She's a mixed pointer and dalmatian, and she came from Bill's district. The pet adoption program that we started several months ago has been very successful. Every pet that we've brought before the council has been adopted. I'd like to acknowledge, we've got Captain Karen Nipsher and Officer Dwayne Clark from the department, and Gina is ready to go today. She has all of her shots.
She's ready to move now, I think.
No, she's ready to go home.
Yes, she is.
She's ready to go home. And I'm going to have Bill say a few words. Bill, this dog was from your district. Let's find Gina a home.
Indeed. Thank you. Gina is from the 11th District, and I say to my constituents, I am your servant, and Gina, we want to make sure is adopted by somebody in the 11th District. I would adopt Gina right now, but I have two shepherds, Rosie and Lulu, and I think that's enough for me at this point. But for one of my great constituents, the 11th District, why don't you call in right now to my office, 213-473-7011, and adopt Gina on behalf of all of us. We like to keep these animals with us rather than send them off to some crazy place called a shelter where they're no longer come back. Let's keep Gina with us. It's only one year old. You've got about 12, 14 years with that dog. It'll be great to balance your life. When you finish your hard work day, you can walk your dog and get your exercise, and at the same time, have a great relationship. Let's save Gina. Thank you.
Now, if you call in and Gina already has a home, we've got shelters throughout the city of Los Angeles. Please go visit the shelters. I'm sure you will find the perfect companion animal. Anybody that's interested can also call 888-452-7381. Gina needs a home. Do we have any takers?
Herb, we've got a taker right here.
Oh, I love it.
This lady rode up in the elevator with Gina. And tell us your name and where you're from.
Tish Nettleship from Santa Monica Canyon.
Okay, great, 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 great.
All right, congratulations, Tish. And for those of you that are out there, let's take Tish go over to the officers right over here. And again, there are many other companion animals. Please call again, 888-452-7381. And I did that with 2 minutes and 34 seconds left. Now that's a quick presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wesson. It's deeply appreciated. Our next presentation will be by Councilwoman Wendy Gruehl.
Thank you very much, Madam President. The individual standing next to me is no stranger to many of us in the City Council. He has been, Alan Rifkin, has been an employee of the Department of Transportation since 1970, retired effective April 15th, after a total of 32 years of exemplary civil service. Most recently, Alan has been the chief of L.A. DOT's Bureau of Planning and Land Use Development, overseeing the work of Transportation Planning Division, the Land Use Development Division, and the Parking Facilities Division. He has been the lead DOT staffer in all transportation planning matters, including the preparation of the transportation element of the city's general plan, the specific plans, 35 community plans. He's also been very involved in some of the major developments and transportation mitigation efforts around Play Vista, Warner Center, Staples Entertainment District, Hollywood and Highland, The Grove, Porter Ranch, just to name a few. He has embraced the philosophy of smart growth and has served really the ambassador role as liaison between the City Planning Department and L.A. DOT to integrate land use with the emerging public transit system and public parking. He has advanced degrees from UCLA, Northwestern University, and he has really demonstrated his professionalism throughout his career in the city's Department of Transportation and leadership roles in the Institute of Transportation Engineers and the Urban Land Institute. And he is, I have to tell you, well respected by his peers and by the community at large. In fact, just a few days ago, one of my constituents said how saddened they were that Alan was retiring, because he was always someone who was a can-do individual, who was a problem solver, and someone that we value very much here. He is a native Angelino. I didn't know this part, that you were born in Boyle Heights, raised in Westlake and Fairfax neighborhoods, and has lived in Echo Park Silver Lake, Los Feliz neighborhoods, for 26 years, working tirelessly and continuously to promote improvements to his community. Mr. Rifkin has also been active in promoting gay rights throughout the city and served on the formation of the Committee of the Gay and Lesbian United Employees, which established the city of Los Angeles as a national leader in the adoption of domestic partners.
And acknowledging, and for those of you from the Armenian community that are here today, how important it is to continue that fight to get Turkey to recognize the genocide and that so many of us here who represent a growing population of Armenians, and Eric and I always challenge each other, who has more Armenians, I think I do in my district, but the importance of the recognition and know that this is a solemn day and one in which people all across the world in this weekend to remember what happened and most importantly, to never forget. So, thank you very much for being here today. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Wendy, and thank you for your support of the community throughout. Council General Kyrtikosian, would you like to say a couple of words? I know we're right about a time, but if you'll indulge us for a couple of extra seconds. And also, we really are excited, Susan, your words about looking towards the future, that Los Angeles and Yerevan, the capital, the largest Armenian city in the world and the second largest Armenian city in the world are being paired together as sister cities from the trip that we took last summer, and we invite all council members to be a part of that ongoing process and a way of strengthening our friendship together for the future.
And Mr. Garcetti, sorry, one of our colleagues, Mr. Kardas, would also like to say a few words before here from the council general. Mr. Kardas.
I want to thank you for your strong words and your statements. I focused on something that you said about them ignoring that this occurred and somehow it ever being justified. For the sake of all men and women of today and tomorrow and all children, such an atrocity should never be ignored and it cannot be justified. So, I wanted to thank you for coming forward and showing us your strength and your resolve to want to make sure that everybody understands what did occur and that it should never, ever happen anywhere on this planet ever again. And we should recognize as we are here in city council, as we do in our state capital in California, and also hopefully we'll get the proper recognition from this nation with our congress to make sure that we set this right once and for all. This is a struggle that should not continue. So, I want to thank you, Eric, for bringing this forward and we'll do this over and over again until the whole world and this country understands that this should never, ever occur ever again. And this did occur and it shall not be ignored and it cannot be justified. Thank you.
Thank you, Council General.
So, as I don't want to break protocol, I know I'd like to be very short as representative of my country. I want to just say thank you, all of you, as good friends of Armenia, as authorities of a city of Los Angeles for this great opportunity. So, thank you again and looking for the great hope for the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Like to acknowledge now, Mr. Wesson, for our next presentation.
Thank you, Madam President and members. Today is a great day because this is Pet Adoption Friday. I'm joined by the great councilman from the 11th District, Bill Rosendahl. This beautiful dog that we have here named Gina is one-year-old. She's a mixed pointer and dalmatian, and she came from Bill's district. The pet adoption program that we started several months ago has been very successful. Every pet that we've brought before the council has been adopted. I'd like to acknowledge, we've got Captain Karen Nipsher and Officer Dwayne Clark from the department, and Gina is ready to go today. She has all of her shots.
She's ready to move now, I think.
No, she's ready to go home.
Yes, she is.
She's ready to go home. And I'm going to have Bill say a few words. Bill, this dog was from your district. Let's find Gina a home.
Indeed. Thank you. Gina is from the 11th District, and I say to my constituents, I am your servant and Gina, we want to make sure is adopted by somebody in the 11th District. I would adopt Gina right now, but I have two shepherds, Rosie and Lulu, and I think that's enough for me at this point. But for one of my great constituents, the 11th District, why don't you call in right now to my office, 213-473-7011, and adopt Gina on behalf of all of us. We like to keep these animals with us rather than send them off to some crazy place called a shelter where they're no longer come back. Let's keep Gina with us. It's only one-year-old. You've got about 12, 14 years with that dog. It'll be great to balance your life. When you finish your hard work day, you can walk your dog and get your exercise and at the same time, have a great relationship. Let's save Gina. Thank you.
Now, if you call in and Gina already has a home, we've got shelters throughout the city of Los Angeles. Please go visit the shelters. I'm sure you will find the perfect companion animal. Anybody that's interested can also call 888-452-7381. Gina needs a home. Do we have any takers?
Herb, we've got a taker right here.
Oh, I love it.
This lady rode up in the elevator with Gina. And tell us your name and where you're from.
Tish Nettleship from Santa Monica Canyon.
Okay, great, 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 great.
All right, congratulations, Tish. And for those of you that are out there, let's take Tish, go over to the officers right over here. And again, there are many other companion animals. Please call again, 888-452-7381. And I did that with 2 minutes and 34 seconds left. Now, that's a quick presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wesson. It's deeply appreciated. Our next presentation will be by Councilwoman Wendy Gruel.
Thank you very much, Madam President. The individual standing next to me is no stranger to many of us in the city council. He has been, Alan Rifkin, has been an employee of the Department of Transportation since 1970, retired effective April 15th after a total of 32 years of exemplary civil service. Most recently, Alan has been the chief of LA DOT's Bureau of Planning and Land Use Development overseeing the work of Transportation Planning Division, the Land Use Development Division, and the Parking Facilities Division. He has been the lead DOT staffer in all transportation planning matters, including the preparation of the transportation element of the city's general plan, the specific plans, 35 community plans. He's also been very involved in some of the major developments and transportation mitigation efforts around Play Vista, Warner Center, Staples Entertainment District, Hollywood and Highland, The Grove, Porter Ranch, just to name a few. He has embraced the philosophy of smart growth and has served really the ambassador role as liaison between the City Planning Department and LA DOT to integrate land use with the emerging public transit system and public parking. He has advanced degrees from UCLA, Northwestern University, and he has really demonstrated his professionalism throughout his career in the city's Department of Transportation and leadership roles in the Institute of Transportation Engineers and the Urban Land Institute. And he is, I have to tell you, well-respected by his peers and by the community at large. In fact, just a few days ago, one of my constituents said how saddened they were that Alan was retiring because he was always someone who was a can-do individual, who was a problem solver and someone that we value very much here. He is a native Angelino. I didn't know this part, that you were born in Boyle Heights, raised in Westlake and Fairfax neighborhoods, and has lived in Echo Park, Silver Lake, Los Feliz neighborhoods for 26 years, working tirelessly and continuously to promote improvements to his community. Mr. Rifkin has also been active in promoting gay rights throughout the city and served on the formation of the Committee of the Gay and Lesbian United Employees, which established the city of Los Angeles as a national leader in the adoption of domestic partner rights. Mr. Rifkin is a devoted life partner of Dick Myers, who's taking the photos now, otherwise he'd be standing with us, and they're looking forward to traveling and exploring together throughout the world and continuing their community service. And I want you to know, Alan, that I'm counting on that part about community service. But my own personal thank you to Alan because he has been someone I could call and pick up the phone who is willing to take on a challenge. And as he said this morning, he had mixed feelings today. It was a happy and sad day because he has dedicated his life to the city, and there are very few employees like Alan Rifkin in the city of Los Angeles. And we have several people who are here from the department, Air Paul, Erwin Kodash, Jeanette Allen, David Cattaldo, Mike Bagary, Moni Patel, and also Alan Willis, I think is here. Anyone else that are standing behind us here? But I'd like us, we have a wonderful presentation, and Tom Labonge, who couldn't be here today, is also a fan of yours, Alan, and the work that you have done. And so, we have this beautiful proclamation that I know has already been framed for you. And if we could all give Alan a great round of applause for his years of service in the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Would like to say a few words.
Yes.
It's an amazing moment for me. We go from the genocide of the Armenians to saving a dog's life. Now, I'd like to ask his partner as well to join him because the fact that you have been a role model for the domestic partner relationships in this country and a role model to younger gay people, it's an amazing, wonderful moment for me as the openly gay guy in the council. Now, I'm 60, soon to be 61. You're only 55. So, we're expecting you right back into public service, working for the great city that you've shown great leadership with. And congratulations, not only for the award, but your bold leadership at a time when people just didn't talk about partners and relationships. Your partner is coming up right now. I want the public to see that gay people and straight people and bi people and all people are people and that relationships and love is what it's all about. And I want to congratulate both of you, Dick and Alan, as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Madam President, I'd like to just ask if Alan Rifkin would say a few words.
Thank you very much for those wonderful words and thank you for the proclamation. I'm going to keep my comments short and simple. I was taught to do that. I want to say thank you. I want to say thank you for the privilege of working for each and every one of you council people. I've been lucky to have touched every one of you and to visit every one of your districts. Thank you for the opportunity to work for your constituents, and thank you for the privilege of working for the city of Los Angeles. Finally, I just would like to thank my staff for helping me out in this work, and I want to thank my staff for carrying on the commitment to work with the communities and try and be problem solvers rather than just civil service. Thank you very much.
I forgot to mention, because James' name was high up here because he assisted, but James Okusaki, who was here as well, from the Department of Transportation. And I challenged Alan a while ago to continue his service and maybe consult with the city. We hope that you'll be part of the team again as we try to get Los Angeles moving again. But it's really been my honor and privilege to know Alan and to work with him, and I look forward to a continuing friendship because it's more than just that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll go take a picture in the back. Okay. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gruel. Mr. Wiesar.
Good morning, colleagues and public. It's really a pleasure today to introduce to you the 2006 Girls Basketball City Invitational Champions, the Roosevelt Rough Riders from Boyle Heights. Congratulations. This is the second championship for this team in the school's history. And I want to tell a little bit about this team, their special team. They have really worked hard and came back from being seeded low in the Invitational Tournament and went on to win it. They had a season record of 17 wins and nine losses, and they had an amazing playoff run. They started off the City Invitational Tournament seeded number eight. They began playoffs with a decisive victory against Franklin. In the second round of playoffs, they were matched against the number-one seeded team, Reseda High School, and defeated the other team by seven points. Ms. Han, they faced a tough San Pedro High School team in the semifinals and won by 10 points. In the finals of the sports arena, they played the number-two seeded team, University High School. The championship game was really exciting. At halftime, Roosevelt was down by 16 points, and you all know how tough it is to come back with six points being down. But in the second half, they came back with intensity on both ends of the court. Their defensive pressure and execution on offense in the second half led them to victory. This team is known for its teamwork, a value that we hope to instill in all our students throughout the school district, and I want to congratulate them. I want to recognize each and every one of these terrific young ladies. But first, I want to turn over the podium to a very special individual. She's a senior, and this senior scored the winning free throws under tremendous pressure, something I don't think I'd be able to do even standing underneath the basket, in the last two seconds of the championship game. Let me introduce to you Sara Magallón. Sara?
Thank you for this recognition today, Councilman Wiesar. We are proud to bring the championship back to our community of Boyle Heights. On the behalf of the girls' varsity basketball team, I would like to present this sweater to you.
Thank you, Sara. Congratulations again. Next, I'd like to recognize the wonderful coaches of this team. This is a unique coaching staff. They are a mother and a daughter team. First is Ms. Dina Mayeda, and I understand you have been coaching for over six years and led them to two Eastern League championships. Congratulations and thank you for bringing this championship hope as well. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Next is Mrs. Haruko Mayeda. She is Dina's mother. She's also the JV coach and have run the entire girls' basketball program for the last 11 years at Roosevelt High School. Congratulations, Mrs. Haruko Mayeda, and we appreciate the support you've given to Roosevelt High School.
Thank you.
And now, I'd like to recognize the rest of the team and certainly our senior who shot those baskets in the last seconds of the championship game, Sara Magallón. Congratulations. Team members, Patrice Norton, congratulations. Thank you very much. I also want to recognize two individuals who could not be with us today, Daisy Acosta, junior guard, and Veronica Alcala, sophomore forward. And also, we have two team managers that I'm going to call up, and they're dedicated members of this team. They practice with the team every day as well as take care of stats and scorekeeping. Let me invite up Brian Lopez and Pedro Casu. Again, congratulations to the whole team. We have a proud tradition in Boyle Heights with our Rough Riders, and we expect again, hopefully, to be in the championship finals again. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you, Councilmember Wiesar. Our next presentation is by Councilmember Dennis Sine.
All right. Good morning, Madam President and colleagues. We are here to recognize this morning a wonderful group, American Field Services. People may wonder, what is American Field Services? What do they represent? November 10th, 2005, the United States Senate unanimously approved a resolution designating 2006 as the Year of Student Abroad. Resolution encourages initiatives to promote and expand study abroad opportunities. Educating students internationally is an important way to share values, create goodwill, and work toward a peaceful global society. Fewer than 1% of all U.S. undergraduates participate in study abroad programs, while nearly 600,000 international students from more than 200 countries study in the United States each year. The American Field Service is a worldwide nonprofit organization dedicated to building a more just and peaceful world through international exchange and intercultural learning. AFS was founded more than 58 years ago by ambulance drivers after World War II. Since that time, more than 350,000 students have participated around the world. 2,800 students from around the globe are participating in the AFS Student Exchange Program this year, leaving their families and friends in faraway places to live in the United States. This year, 15 AFS students are living in the greater Los Angeles area, visiting from Argentina, Brazil, Chile, China, Ecuador, France, Germany, Paraguay, Thailand, and Turkey. By hosting a high school student from another country, local families build bridges for nations and bring the world right to their doorstep and into their own home. Simple tasks such as eating meals together, going to movies, playing sports, visiting historic and cultural landmarks will make all the difference for a young visitor studying in the United States for a year, semester, or summer. This opportunity is also rewarding experience for an American family to experience life through a new sense of appreciation and the diversity of the world as they share their close-knit family and community life and build lifelong bonds that will never be served. I have a son, Eric, who graduated from Berkeley, and he is living in China, in Beijing. He's attending Beijing University. He's in his second year, and I know what it is to have your loved child, a student, go abroad and learn the other culture. He's in a graduate program at Beijing University and enjoying it. And the future will be shaped by the next generation's ability to function in increasingly complex global society. And we're very honored and pleased to have with us this morning representatives. Shemay Kramer, Greater Los Angeles Liaison Coordinator. He's the AFS student to France in 1977, currently host uncle to Ben Perrier of France, student at La Caneta High School. Where are you? No, I know. Where's the student? Ben, come on down. Ben, that's you, La Caneta. You're cutting class today?
Yes.
Yes, he's cutting class today. All right. We're not going to get you for truancy. Monami Koremoto, Japan student, Marshall High School with her host father, Kurt Hathaway. Where are you? That's you? That's you? Good morning. Marshall High School, Tom Labonge is a graduate from Marshall. Pardon me?
Verdugo Hills.
Verdugo? They've got Marshall. I'm sorry. You switched. Okay, because Marshall High, Tom Labonge, one of my colleagues, went to Marshall High, and if he knew you were Marshall High, you'd probably be crowned the queen of the city. But Marshall High, very, very important school. Many of our, many of our people in Los Angeles graduate from Marshall High. Tuna Karos, Turkey student, Palisades High School. Tuna, good morning. And Richard Lenheim, former AFS International Board Member and previously as a senior executive at Universal and Paramount. Richard, good morning. And I'm going to now turn it over to Shemay to introduce everybody else and introduce the students from across the globe.
Thank you, councilmen. Good morning, council, President Garcetti, members of the council. My name is Shemay Kramer, and although most of you know me for the work I've done on behalf of the gay sports community here in Los Angeles the last 20 years, I currently serve as the volunteer liaison coordinator for the greater Los Angeles area overseeing several of our local chapters for AFS. One of the reasons I'm so passionate about this program is because when I was 17, I was an AFS student. Although I currently live about three blocks from the intersection of Hollywood and Highland, I spent my summer on a wheat farm in the most remote area of France where there are more cows than there are people. But I wouldn't have traded that experience for anything, as I tell the students, because that experience gave me self-confidence. It taught me how to be an independent, critical thinker, and most of all, it taught me how to overcome any obstacles that come my way in life and to appreciate the differences of our cultures. I want to acknowledge someone who is here today from our New York office, the Vice President of Operations, Margaret Hunt. Richard Lindheim will be discussing our next forward movement with our local chapter and what we hope to accomplish here in Los Angeles. But one thing I'd like to do is challenge each and every one of our council members that next year, when we come back, we have an AFS student placed in each and every one of our council districts because the next phase of our development is critical in international relationships, primarily with the countries where there are predominant Muslim populations. And so, now, without any hesitation, let me introduce to you Manu Koremoto, a student at Verdugo Hills High School.
Thank you, Shemay, and good morning, President Garcetti, council members, and members of the city council. My name is Manu Koremoto, from support Japan. I am a student at the Verdugo Hills High School in Council District 2, and I'm here today with my host dad, Kurt Hathaway. On behalf of my fellow AFL Los Angeles foreign exchange student, I would like to thank you for this honor today. We represent just 15 of more than 2,800 high school exchange students from 50 countries currently in the United States with AFS and its partner programs. We are here today to ask for your help in locating new host families for next years, student through your contacts with all the neighborhood, council, and viewers of Channel 35, LA City View. When you host an exchange student, not only will the AFL student go home with life-changing experiences, but your host family will walk away with a better understanding of your local and global communities. local and global communities. If anyone is interested in hosting a Falling student, please call 1-800-AFS-INFO or visit our chapter website at www.afsla.org. Thank you for helping us bring the world a little closer by hosting outstanding exchange students with caring American families. Dóum arigatou gozaimashta.
Thank you. If I could ask everyone in the chambers to, please keep their conversations down to a minimum. Thank you. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Manu, and good morning, President Garcetti, Councilmember Zine, and members of City Council. My name is Tuna Keos, from Zonguldak, Turkey. I'm a student at Palisades Charter High School in Council District 11, and I'm here today with my host grandfather, Tish Nadelshim. On November 10, 2005, the United States Senate passed a result, designating 2006 as the Year of Study Abroad. Educating students internationally is an important way to share the values of each other's culture, to create goodwill around the world, and to work towards a peaceful global society. If you know a high school student interested in studying abroad, please call 1-800-AFS-INFO or visit our chapter website at www.afsla.org. There is an old Sanskrit says that has been part of AFS from the beginning, "Walk together, talk together, O ye people of the earth, then and only then shall have peace." And now, it's my honor to introduce Los Angeles Business Executive and former AFS Board Member, Mr. Richard Lenheim.
Thank you, Tuna, and good morning. AFS was initially called the American Field Service because it was formed by a group of ambulance drivers from World War I, who, after World War II, said, "Is there any way we can prevent and stop the ignorance and intolerance that lead to hatred and lead to war?" And they began an international exchange program, which today has become the litmus test for all international exchange programs. And high school and student exchange programs and colleges are now known throughout the country. It's now taken almost for granted. That program was begun by that group of ambulance drivers after World War II. After the events of 9/11, I sat down with Alex Plinio, the president of AFS, and we said, "You know, AFS needs a new mission. It needs to expand its mission, to prevent the ignorance and intolerance that lead to hatred between the Muslim world and the Western world." And the State Department established a program called the E.S. Program, and we're going to bring that program to Los Angeles next year. We're going to need your support. We're going to need the support of volunteers, both in terms of helping to coordinate that program and in terms of hosting these students, not just from the Middle East, but also Muslim students from Asia. We think it's a very important program that can... You know, the greatest monuments of man have been built, stone by stone, brick by brick, from the pyramids of Egypt to the great Gothic cathedrals of Europe. We can do the same here, and we appreciate this opportunity, and we look forward to your support for the E.S. Program next year.
Madam President, thank you. We have certificates for all of the students that are here, and we will do a presentation with photos in the back. Madam President, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Parks for our next presentation.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask Mr. Wesson to come up and join me at the podium. Also, I'd like to ask our honored guest, Warren Moon, to come up, and also, I'd like to ask the contingent of Warren Moon supporters, Pop Warner football players, his 30-year agent and former high school friend, Mr. Steinberg, and Mr. Brad Pye from the historical... Here I got this. From the historical issues of the Los Angeles... The city of Los Angeles is one of the few black sports writers that were in the country at the time that he was covering for the Sentinel and made many phrases in journalism famous during that time. Ms. President, today I'm joined here with a group of people that I personally met over three decades ago. Many of them were young children at the time. Today, they're adults. This group of kids have become attorneys, business consultants, even a state senator, teachers, investment bankers, and municipal employees, and some have become professional athletes. Thirty-five years ago, as a young officer in LAPD, I decided to volunteer, at the insistence of my lieutenant, Joe Razan, to work with the Baldwin Hills Youth Football in South Los Angeles. There was a young kid who was always mature for his age, always serious, and often was teased by his ballplayers because of that seriousness, but because of his mature demeanor at that age, they often referred to him as Pops. Forty years later, Pops is here today as a history-making moment, in that he is going to be inducted into the National Football League Hall of Fame as the first black quarterback in the history of football. Some who came before him was Willie Throer, the first black quarterback to play in the NFL with the Chicago Bears. Marlon Briscoe, who's here today, and we honored just a month or so ago, who was the first to start a game, an NFL game, as a quarterback for the Denver Broncos. Later went on to win a couple of Super Bowls with Miami. And also James Harris, who started his career in Los Angeles, became the first African-American quarterback to win a playoff game with the Redskins. One of Warren's contemporaries, Doug Williams, was the first black quarterback to win a Super Bowl. The kid that they called Pops is here today, was raised in the mid-city area of Los Angeles, where he attended both Alta Loma and Marvin Avenue Elementary Schools. After that, he attended Mount Vernon Middle School, which is recently renamed for the late Johnny L. Cochran Jr., and Mr. Wesson has ensured that we enshrine Mr. Cochran's name by naming the street in front of the school in his honor also. As a student at Hamilton High School, was very unique. He and a fellow Baldwin Hills alumnus, the late Michael Stennis, were viewed as the top two quarterbacks in the city. Warren was recruited by a number of Division I schools, but at that time, what occurred was that colleges wanted to recruit him and change his position. He chose not to do that. He went over to West LA Community College, I believe is one of the first years that they had football, and he caught the eye of the University of Washington. To show you that, he rewarded that confidence in that in 1977. He was co-player of the year in the Pac-10, and we all remember in 1978, he was the most valuable player at the Rose Bowl, where Washington Huskies beat the number four Michigan 27 to 20. He rushed for two touchdowns in that game and threw for another, and that was the first time I knew he had the speed to run for two touchdowns. Although his skills went unnoticed by the NFL, he immediately signed in Canada, CFL, where he played from 1978 to 83. He led his team to five consecutive Canadian Football League Grey Cup titles. He also set professional records for most yards passed in a single game, 555, and a single season, 4,648. He threw for 20,000 yards and 140 touchdowns in five-year period. In 84, he signed with the Houston Oilers, where he became the team's starting quarterback. Under the offensive strategy known as the run-and-shoot, he threw for over 4,000 yards four times during his career. He finished his NFL career with 49,000 yards and 291 career touchdowns. List of accomplishments off the field, he was named the NFL Man of the Year for his work in underserved communities. In 1989, he founded the Crescent Moon Foundation to raise money for college academic scholarships in Seattle, Los Angeles, Houston, and Minneapolis-St. Paul. He also has donated over $250,000 to his church, the Windsor Village United Methodist, to build a new community center. Every year, he's hosted an annual celebrity bowling tournament, which raises funds for urban scholarship funds. He is in retirement at this time, in his retirement from the league with the assistance of Willie Throer, James Harris, Vince Edward, Randall Cunningham, Doug Williams. He's founded the Field Generals. The Field Generals is a nonprofit organization founded by NFL greats who are dedicated to teaching and preserving history of the African-American quarterback. As a group, the Field Generals believe they are instructing youth of today in the art of how to be a quarterback, both on and off the field, through leadership, responsibility, excellence, and that they're nurturing leaders of tomorrow. Today, he works and serves as the radio voice of the Seattle Seahawks, and also serves as an analyst, as an analyst for the Fox Sports Nets Ultimate Fantasy Football Show. We have a certificate for him. Before I bring Warren up, I just want to ask Herb Wesson, who also was a Pop Warner football coach at Culver City. He was fortunate to come to Culver City well after Baldwin Hills would beat them every year. So, he has stories that no one else remembers, that Culver City actually beat Baldwin Hills one day, but we're going to give him a couple of seconds to recount that.
The chief gets six minutes. I get a couple of seconds. Madam President, before I start, I want to make two requests of this City Council. I want to request that whenever we bring in pro athletes, that for those of us that are vertically challenged, that we have a riser that we can stand on, so that we can be as tall as we want to be. The second thing that I would suggest that this council do is basically what the teachers used to tell us in school, you know, when you come to school and you'd bring candy, and the teachers would say, "If you didn't bring enough for everybody, then don't bring it." So, Chief, next time, you do something. I want my own Don jersey.
No, you're not getting a jersey.
How? Okay, anyway.
I'll let you wear it one day.
Yeah, let me wear it one day. I do want to say, and I have Vera Ford from the Baldwin Pop Warner Football Association is here today. I coached Culver City for 12 years. I lost one game to Baldwin, and that's because my son fumbled.
But tell him you only played one game.
No, we played, we played them a lot. It's an honor to be here. Years ago, this great quarterback, Warren Moon, was honored, I believe, in the city of Culver City at one of the studios, and Brad, I don't know if you were there or not, but I had the opportunity to pinch-hit for Nate Holden, so I have a photograph of you and I when you were still playing, and I was younger and about 15 pounds lighter. We have Marlon Briscoe here today, who was the first African-American quarterback to actually start a game, and we honored him. Bill Rosenthal honored him, but it was Warren Moon. It was Warren Moon that let the world know that you need to judge players based on their ability to play and not the color of their skin. There was... And he did that because he was great. We would watch the games, and I pulled for Houston all the time, except for when they played the Cleveland Browns. The only thing that this great man, this great quarterback hasn't, was unable to accomplish, was a Super Bowl. But I want you to know, Mr. Moon, in the eyes of sports fans, you did win a Super Bowl, because you opened the doors, I think, for players of color. And right now, in the NFL, people judge you based on your skills and athleticism. Last thing I want to say is that we have with us today Tommy Irvine, who's... Tommy, where are you? Come up a little closer, because you're closer to my size. I should get you, I should get you and your son. Yeah, where's Brian? Come on, come on. Come on, Brian, come on.
In Gifford.
Yeah, Giff, yeah.
All Bruins.
This man...
What did you say?
This man was the commissioner for the King Conference, and I don't know for how many years, 30, 25, but he held the conference together, and unfortunately, which was a Pop Warner football conference, and unfortunately, right around the time he left, the conference basically broke up. We still have teams playing in other areas. He's raised several great sons. We've got Giff to my left, and Brian, yeah, Brian, you're really my size. And Brian and I, we all coached together at Culver City High School, and I'm sure that Brian can attest to the fact, and the commissioner, that we whooped up on Baldwin on a regular basis. Because I'm, not only am I good-looking, I was a hell of a Pop Warner football coach. Anyway, Warren Moon, it is an honor to have you with us today. You are the greatest.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. That was definitely more than a few seconds, but we do have two other council members that would like to speak. Councilmember Cardenas, followed by Councilmember Reyes. Oh, yes.
Let me just ask Vera Ford, who's been with the Baldwin Hills football for a number of years and has served in a variety of capacities. She has an award for Warren before we give him this council certificate.
Thank you, Councilwoman Parks, and I want to give this little certificate to Warren. I almost said Harold, because I'm old enough to remember when he was Harold. Baldwin Hills Football Association proudly congratulates Warren Harold, and it should have been Harold Warren Moon, upon being inducted into the Professional Football Hall of Fame, August 2006, Canton, Ohio. We're so, so proud. I go back to the days when I took Warren to practice in my station wagon with my sons, and I'm so proud. And I'm also proud that Baldwin Hills Football Association has two players inducted into the Professional Football Hall of Fame, and I think that's a lot saying for a little organization to now to have two in the Hall of Fame, and we're proud of that. And we're also proud of Warren. Oh, James Lofton is the other one in the Hall of Fame from Baldwin.
Thank you. So, Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Reyes, and then Mr. Parks should be able to have Mr. Moon speak as well. Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. Some people watching will probably think, "Well, Tony's a guy. This is football. He's excited, because he finally got to meet Warren Moon, one of the guys that I grew up watching on the field, playing." But I'm not excited about meeting you, Warren, today because of your football, so much as I'm excited because I respect you. When I heard your words on national television, when you asked those questions, when you asked the league, when you asked those human questions that were articulated earlier about judging people by their abilities and not the color of their skin, and to insult an entire community that the intelligence of a quarterback is just not for certain communities, that really used to hurt me. But when you actually spoke out, you were talking to me. I was never a quarterback. I was never that good, but you were talking to me, because that translates into so many things in our children's lives. So many things that when we get told by our counselors, "No, you don't, you don't want to be an engineer. You want to be a mechanic," what are they really saying? When they say, "You know what? You shouldn't go to university. You should maybe try junior college. Maybe they won't eat you alive there." When you said that, you brought all of that back to me, and I'll tell you, I am so proud of you. You're inducted to the Hall of Fame. That's incredible. But to me, you're a human being that deserves to be inducted in a Hall of Fame of righteousness, a Hall of Fame where people are actually talking about people, not about a game, but about life. You inspired me. I look up to you. I'm very proud of you. And if you would, please, make sure that you don't leave without taking a picture with me, because I want to take a picture with you. And that's going to, that's going to go up in my office, and I have a lot of pictures, but I promise you this, every time I have a young person in my office, I'm going to take them over to your picture, and my children too, and I'm going to tell them about you. Thank you so much for speaking out. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Reyes.
Thank you so much for who you are. God bless you.
Thank you. Councilmember Reyes, that's a hard act to follow.
I'm going to say wow. I think Tony has said a lot of what I was feeling. I'm also of those high school years, the 70s, and having three brothers playing on the streets, I could hear it, Warren Moon going back to pass, throwing the bomb down the street, playing in the playgrounds. And so I just want to thank you on behalf of all the communities of color for giving us that opportunity. And I think Cardenas said it the best. You deserve to be in the Hall of Fame for human beings, for all the good messages and the positive reinforcement our young people need. And thank you Bernard Parks for bringing them to light, because many folks, it's 2006, the 70s and 80s was a long time ago, but the Hall of Fame is today. And so for that, thank you so much. And I also want a picture with you as well. Thank you very much.
Warren, on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, the mayor and all city elected officials want to honor you on your day that's coming up. But again, as everyone has said, you've not only been a remarkable athlete, I think the key factor is what has been said before, you've been a remarkable person. I will, this is one of the proudest days of my life to see a young kid, number seven, who we yelled at and screamed at, that we saw on television and we saw, and I think if we combine your records in the Canadian Football League and the NFL, you've thrown the ball and completed more touchdowns and more yardage than anybody that's ever played football. And if no one has seen his career, throws the prettiest pass of any quarterback that's ever taken the ball. Congratulations.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Madam President, city council members, thank you very much for recognizing me today. Coach Parks, he'll always be Coach Parks to me, even though he is a councilman. The words I've heard today are very humbling, and, you know, I started out my career with a great family support, but also my roots has a lot to do with the success that I've been able to accomplish over my career, and a lot of those roots are standing right here behind me. These people that I grew up with at Baldwin Hills Community Park, being involved with the Baldwin Hills Youth Association for Football. I learned a lot of my discipline, a lot of my toughness from guys like Coach Parks, Coach Ruzan, all the different coaches who were part of the LAPD, and they taught us a lot of the things that they learned in the police academy on how to be disciplined, how to be tough, and I took those things with me when I left that park onto high school and all the different levels that I played at, and it really helped me as far as dealing with some of the things I had to deal with, both racially and trying to establish myself as a quarterback. And if it wasn't for some of that toughness, who knows, I might have quit and maybe went another direction. So, I thank Baldwin Hills, I thank the LAPD for their support of me and all the other young kids that played in that program. I also want to thank my attorney, Lee Steinberg, who's behind me right here, who was with me throughout my whole career, the years I went to Canada, never turned his back on me, made me a lot of money, a very wealthy man, but also instilled a wealth in me of giving back to community, and that's something that I learned from him, something that I took from him, and that kind of spearheaded a lot of the different community projects that I got involved in as a player. So, if it wasn't for people like the people at Baldwin Hills, Vera Ford, people like that, that gave me the time to develop me to what I became, that was some of the things that motivated me to go back into communities and do the same thing for other young kids, because if I saw it could work for me, then I knew it could work for others. So, I want to thank you guys for that inspiration also. I want to thank my wife, Mandy, for being here today. Very important part of my life as I move forward, and a lot of good things I think are still left to come for me. The Hall of Fame is quite an honor because it means you've reached the pinnacle of your sport, and that's something nobody can ever take away from me, and I feel like it's something I've earned because of everything I had to go through to get there. But I am also very humbled to be involved with such an esteemed group of players in that Hall of Fame, and I'm looking forward to that induction ceremony in August. So, again, thank you, LA City Council, for recognizing me today. It's a very special day. Los Angeles has always been special to me because it's my home, even though I haven't lived here for a long time throughout my career, but I'm back here now, and you guys have not forgotten me, and I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Wow. You got to run for office. What an inspiration. I walked in, as Warren was getting this acknowledgement, heard my good friend, Councilmember Parks, talk about those days when he was a coach, and I said at a wedding not too long ago that the apple doesn't fall far from the tree, and I'll tell you, Warren, you're a great human being, you could see that as soon as you start speaking. I got to believe that you had something to do with that. And I can tell you that to be a coach, to invest in a young kid and see that young kid grow into a great man is, I know, something that you got to be proud of, and I think we're all proud of you, Warren, here in Los Angeles. I can't imagine what it was like, as you said, to be the first, and, well, actually, I can't imagine what it's like to be the first, but I know that there are many potholes and obstacles along the way, and I think they made you stronger and better, and that's why today we acknowledge you, not just as a great athlete, a great quarterback, not just as a black quarterback, but as a great human being. Congratulations.
Thank you. I'd like to acknowledge Councilmember Perry and Councilmember Garcetti for presentation.
I just want to get them ready for when we go back there. You want to go first, since you're the president?
No, I think I'm doing the groups and you're doing the...
Okay, okay, all right, that's fine. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. It's a pleasure to join our council president, Eric Garcetti, and the Environmental Affairs Department, the Coalition for Jewish Life and the Environment, and all of you, and celebrating Earth Day here in the city of Los Angeles. The protection, the restoration, and enhancement of our environment is vital to quality of life, a better quality of life for the residents, workers, and visitors in our beautiful city. In fact, the quality of the environment here in our city is key to our economic growth, and we're being joined by Mr. Rosendahl as well. The link between social progress, environmental protection, and economic development is contained in the concept and practice of environmental justice. Environmental industries such as clean vehicles, recycled products, pollution control technologies are just some of the targeted growth sectors of the Southern California economy and will provide numerous new jobs and economic development for Los Angeles while at the same time working to protect our environment. This year marks the 36th anniversary of the first Earth Day and the 14th anniversary of the United Nations Earth Summit. Thousands of concerned people and numerous organizations, both environmental business, ethnic organizations throughout Los Angeles, will be sponsoring and participating in environmental cleanups, restorations, events, educational events during Earth Week, including Council District Nine, who will be hosting this coming Saturday at our wonderful Ross Snyder Park, and Environmental Service Fair and Cleanup. So, I would like to ask my council colleagues to join me in presenting D. Allen with this resolution that states, "The City of Los Angeles City Council declares April 22nd, along with our mayor, declares April the 22nd as Earth Day in the City of Los Angeles." You want to present it now?
Go ahead, go ahead.
All right, let me finish my comments, and then we'll take a nice picture. Otherwise, we'll be here a long time. I want to thank all the schools and the organizations recognized here today, because we need everyone's help in protecting our environment, and I'm sure my colleagues join me in urging all residents of the city of Los Angeles to participate in Earth Day activities in order to learn more about environmental issues and recognition of the importance of protecting our environment and promoting environmental justice. I just want to name the schools very quickly who are participating in this effort, and the Environmental Affairs Department is providing each recipient with trees to plant at their respective locations. 10th Street School, the Accelerated Charter School, Audubon Middle School, Ucannon Street Elementary School, Burbank Boulevard Elementary School, California Kids Care, Coliseum Street Elementary School, Commonwealth Elementary School, Dorsey High School, Eagle Rock Elementary School, Foché Learning Center, Jermaine Street Elementary School, Hamilton High School, Haynes Street Elementary School, David Starr Jordan High, Kentwood Elementary School, Kester Avenue Elementary School, Kittredge Elementary School, Lauderdale, Joseph Lacotte Middle School, Manuel Arts, okay, Manuel Arts Senior High School, Markham Middle School, John Marshall High School, here's one for Tom Labange, okay, an Open Charter Magnet School, Pacoima Elementary School, Pacoima Middle School, Patrick Henry Middle School, Polytechnic High School, Roosevelt High, they were just here, Sun Valley Middle School, Sutter Middle School, and Toluca Lake, all right, Sutter Middle School, you're back there, Toluca Lake Elementary School. And now, Mr. Garcetti, would you please, oh, the mayor, mayor, why don't you say a few words?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Perry, and Council President Garcetti for sponsoring this day today, Earth Day, the 36th anniversary of Earth Day here in, not just here in Los Angeles, but across the country. Earth Day, as you all know, was founded on the idea that we have a responsibility to all of the young people here, and so the fact that the two of you have brought together so many young students is very important, because the most important thing that we could do is leave a legacy of great natural resources for our children, cleaner air, clean water, parks and open space, green space, and a greener and more sustainable city. And I can tell you to all the young people here, there are no two people who are committed to that more in the city of Los Angeles as we celebrate Earth Day than Councilmember Perry and Council President Eric Garcetti. Let's give them a big hand. And of course, when I say that, there's also a new partner in that group, and that's Bill Rosendahl, who hails from the West Side and the Venice area, and I can tell you, he's someone that understands whether it's the Biona Wetlands or green space in that area, that this is something that we all need to do. So, I'm very excited, and tomorrow, I believe it's tomorrow, tomorrow, I'm going to put forth a plan, I think it's tomorrow, I hope it's tomorrow, to plant a million trees here in Los Angeles, and working with the city council and all of you and students, we're going to plant the trees. They're going to be trees that are planted in the name of all of the young people. So, this city is a greener city, so it's a healthier city, so it's a more sustainable city, so we're really investing in what Earth Day is all about. It's about celebrating the children, the environment, and the compact that we have to have with our environment. I'm doing it on the 26th? I'm sorry. I'm doing it on the 26th. Misspoke, that's what happens. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Mayor Villarreal for being here as part of our Earth Day commemoration, and our great chair of our Energy and Environment Committee, stalwart environmentalist and environmental justice advocate, Councilmember Jan Perry. Jan was able to speak a lot about how our city family impacts the environment, and I've been asked to highlight how our community sector does the same thing. We have some of the most exciting environmentalists in the country based here in Los Angeles who have led the movement in so many different sectors of environmental activism, and our friend Lee Wallach, who each year makes sure that we are able to commemorate and bring in that entire group of environmental organizations. Lee heads up the Coalition on the Environment and Jewish Life of Southern California and also the Interfaith Environmental Council. But the groups that we are thanking and honoring on this Earth Day or Eve is California Water Impact Network, CalPerg, the Children's Nature Institute, the Coalition for Clean Air, which I know has gotten many council members around here to dress up in a fashion show each year, Environmental Defense, Environment Now, Heal the Bay, Josephine Gonzalez, who's the LADWP Environmental Affairs Officer in the Solar Program, we want to thank her, Los Angeles League of Conservation Voters, the Natural Resources Defense Council, Pacoima Beautiful, Physicians for Social Responsibility, Tree People, the Trust for Public Land, the Union of Concerned Scientists, there are so many other groups that we could each name, Northeast Trees, the Friends of the Los Angeles River. Take a topic, and we have people here that are making sure that we are the greenest and cleanest city anywhere in America, and we've got a long way to go, but we've got some really great things moving forward, from cleaning up the Los Angeles River to passing with the second highest vote ever of any ballot measure, Proposition O, which Councilmember Perry and myself, and Mr. Weiss, and Mr. Reyes, and so many other people worked on. The Renewable Portfolio Standard, that we worked together with the mayor on to make sure that we'll get to 20% by 2010. The Protected Tree Ordinance, to expand protection of these trees that we're going to plant. And contrary to popular belief, it's not a couple walnuts that'll fall in your backyard that you no longer can take down, it takes about five or six years of growth that you would have to ignore a tree before it would be protected. But we have the bays and the black walnuts and the sycamores and the oak trees that have defined our infrastructure. I'll close, one other thing that we're working with the mayor's office on too, for builders out there, 40%, Mr. Smith has been a great leader on this, 40% of all the waste that we have in Los Angeles comes from the construction industry, and we're going to build green buildings and homes here in Los Angeles, and if you're doing that, you will get an expedited plan check in the city to make sure that you are building green right here in Los Angeles. I spent last Earth Day on behalf of the city of Los Angeles up in Canada, in Nunavut, which is the newest province in Canada, in the capital called Iqaluit, which is about 90% Inuit populated. And the Inuit who live up there said, "We can see what's happening. We are the canaries in the coal mine, and we have seen the impact of global warming as polar bears, as their ancestral hunting grounds, as Inuit are literally being depleted. Permafrost that has been frozen for 20,000 years is beginning to melt, and homes are falling into ditches." They know what is happening, we see what is happening, and they asked us, "What is Los Angeles going to do to protect us?" And I said, "We're going to not only continue with our clean fleet, vehicle fleet here, our clean fuel vehicles, we're going to expand that, we're going to take a leadership role, and I know the mayor has joined with mayors from around this country to implement the Kyoto Protocol, even if our national government won't do it, we will do it here." And we can show that we have the power from Los Angeles to go green, to make that radiate out, and as my friend Salma Hayek said up there that a year ago, she said, "We are not saving the earth, we are saving ourselves, because this earth will long outlive all of us, but if we want to save ourselves, it's time for all of us to go green." So, happy Earth Day to everybody, and we'd like to present this on behalf of Mr. Rosendahl to say a couple of words.
Santa Monica Bay Restoration Commission is chaired by Jack Weiss, who is providing great leadership for us on that commission. I want to acknowledge Jack Weiss as chair of the Santa Monica Bay Restoration Commission. Secondly, in the 11th district, I've committed to 60,000 trees that I would take the mayor's lead with, and we've been planting almost every weekend and putting the trees in, and the mayor, of course, is saying the most important thing is nurturing those trees in the first years of their existence, and we need to water them, and his plan for that will sustain those trees, which are the lungs of the planet. I'm blessed to be in the 11th district with the mountains and the wilderness, the wetlands and the ocean, and I see myself as the steward of the environment in that district, as the mayor and the president of the council and Councilwoman Jan Perry are, and everybody around this horseshoe has to do with our commitment to our environment. Global warming is happening, we're all experiencing it every day, and when our nation, especially in Washington, begins to appreciate that with the protocols that are needed, that the whole people on the earth are screaming for happening, we'll be in a better place. What we're doing in Los Angeles is providing leadership for other cities in the rest of the nation. Thank you.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl, and, Mr. Mayor, if you would please join us in presenting this resolution, or certificate, to, yes, no, resolution, to D. Allen, who is the general manager of the Environmental Affairs Department, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles and our mayor and the entire city council in recognition of Earth Day 2006. Earth Day 2006.
Thank you, and while you're taking the picture, I'd like to add my congratulations for Earth Day and to COGAL and all the organizations. We look forward to participating and planting trees and being part of a day that we can recognize our earth and make sure our children recognize the importance of taking care of it. So thank you to all the organizations who are doing events across the city and across the country to recognize. Okay, any other parts of the presentation? You're complete, okay. Thank you very much. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Weiss for a special introduction.
Okay, and while I make this introduction, if you're a kid at Westwood Charter School, you should be standing up and waving right now, okay? Folks, I want to introduce you to 40 members of the third grade. Wave to the mayor, guys, from the Westwood Charter School, third graders, we've got another 80 of them.
Have the camera show them so they can see themselves on TV tonight. There you go.
Welcome to City Hall, guys.
There they go.
Yeah, you're famous. I told you you'd be famous.
Thank you, cameraman. Thank you, Mr. Weiss, for that special introduction. Colleagues, we do have another presentation that I know, we have a number of individuals here today with the mayor for special presentation this morning. And as soon as our last presentation, colleagues, we will run through quickly after this presentation our agenda, and then go to public comment period after that for those of you that are waiting to speak to the City Council this morning. Mr. Garcetti, are the people present here, do you know for our next presentation? Thank you all for your patience today. It's great to see we have so many people who came to celebrate Earth Day.
We have a special group about to come in, so we will interrupt as soon as they are here, but we are celebrating together, the mayor and Councilmember Reyes and this entire council, a very special month here in Los Angeles and throughout this country, Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, and here in Los Angeles, where we are the gateway city for so many different countries in Asia, where we have the second largest populations outside those home countries of so many different states, in a city where so many of our workforce, both in the private and public sector and right here as our city family, are of Asian Pacific Islander heritage, we today stand strong as one of the great Asian cities of the world to celebrate that month. So with that, let's cue the lion, if it's ready, and with the mayor, we will celebrate While we're waiting, let me tell you some things.
Yeah, stretch.
The history of Los Angeles is a history of Asian culture here. As we all know, the pobladores, the original settlers, I hear the drumming, two of them Let's give a round of applause to our performers. I know it's a slippery slope, but Ohio, Ni Hao, Sawadee, Anasayao, if you start, you gotta go all the languages, so I know I was gonna mess up, but I want to welcome everybody here with the mayor, Councilmember Reyes, to our celebration of Asian Pacific American Heritage Month here in Los Angeles. As I was saying before, the history of Los Angeles, the original inhabitants, of course, of Los Angeles came from Asia. The Native Americans that lived here before even the Spaniards arrived were of Asian descent. The original 44 pobladores, when the city got its name, two of them were called in the Spanish writings of the time, Chinos, Chinese, they were actually Filipino, and they were a part of those 44 pobladores, those intrepid settlers who came here from Baja California and formed this great pueblo. I have the great privilege of representing in 13th District, one of the highest concentration of Asian Pacific Americans in the city of Los Angeles, the northern tip of Koreatown, Thai Town, having the historic Filipino town, the first so-named neighborhood anywhere in the United States, and my colleague Ed Reyes represents, of course, Chinatown, Jan Perry, Little Tokyo, and all of us are enriched by the communities that we serve, which draw upon our heritage as an Asian city. This month, we are celebrating throughout the city with celebrations that are both about Pan-Asian unity and some of the specific cultures of Asia with a number of different events, and I really want to thank the mayor's office and the APAHM Committee, which my deputy Joe Bernardo was a great part, but so many of your offices have deputies that have been planning this, all these wonderful events for this month. So I want to acknowledge also this month's honorees, but I'll turn that over to the mayor to do, because we have some proclamations as well, but some incredible folks who have contributed to the lifeblood of making this such a great city. So please welcome again the mayor of our city, Antonio Villarreal, to celebrate this month as well.
Thank you, Council President Eric Garcetti, for allowing us to celebrate this day here in the chambers. I'd like to acknowledge the lion dancers who brought us into the chambers. Let's give them a big hand. It's fitting for us to have them welcome us today in honor of Asian Pacific Islander American Heritage Month, and I want to thank, as I said, the Council President, Councilmember Reyes, and all of the council today for, because today we celebrate the 29th Annual Asian Pacific Islander American Heritage Month here in the city of Los Angeles. I'm always inspired, we have a little, Eric and I have a little thing about speaking from the heart and also a little bit about history, and I'm always inspired when I hear the Council President speak, and especially when he speaks about the diversity of Los Angeles. You know, this city has changed. It's changed dramatically in the last 50 years. This was a city, unfortunately, where more than 100 years ago, the Chinese were scapegoated and persecuted and hung here, very close to where we are today. This was a city that had covenants in the land that barred the Chinese and the Japanese and Filipinos from be able to buy a home here in the city of Los Angeles, not to mention African Americans and Latinos and other groups. This was a city that struggled with diversity over the years, and today, you look at the council and you see a reflection of LA. Today, you see a council president who traces his heritage to Mexico, you see, you see a community, a city coming together that comes from every corner of the earth, and as Council President Garcetti said, from our very beginning, the first 44 pobladores, there were two that were Filipino back then. They didn't quite make the whole journey, but they were part of the original settlers, and you've heard me say, there were people of African heritage among those 44. We come from every corner of the earth here, and today we celebrate a community that has come to this great nation to enjoy the American dream in the way that others have come, from Europe and other places. And I believe, and I know that this council believes, and that's why we spend, take the time out of their busy schedule to celebrate this month, because we believe that LA and America has been enriched by the contributions of Asian Pacific Islanders, and I want to say to you that as the mayor of this city, I couldn't be prouder to be the mayor of the most diverse city anywhere in the world, a city that has as its destiny the connection between this diversity and our countries of origin with our port and our airport, and we're gonna be that Venice of the 21st century, and we're gonna be that Venice because of this community and the many other communities that have honored us with their hard work, with their values, with their commitment to family and faith, with their patriotism, and with their hard work and industriousness. So I am very honored to celebrate this month, and so on behalf of the city of Los Angeles today, I proclaim April 21st, 2006, the opening of Asian Pacific Islander American Heritage Today, we proclaim Asian Pacific Islander American Heritage Month, and this beautiful design here, this beautiful, what would I call it? Painting? Artwork? Artwork. When in doubt, this beautiful artwork will be on the cover of the calendar for Asian Pacific Islander American Heritage Month. Very honored and like to present this to, when the honorees come up, so.
Here's the first honoree.
The first honoree, Yuri. So let's thank our Cultural Affairs Department and the sponsors and the Asian Pacific Islander American Heritage Month Committee for putting all this together. I'd now like to acknowledge with the help of the Council President and Councilmember Reyes, a woman who really needs no introduction. When you think about the Civil Rights Movement, the Human Rights Movement, when you think about someone who's had the courage of her conviction over many, many decades, she fought for equal rights for minorities against the Vietnam War, Debbie Allen once called her, "This is a cool woman," and I think she is too. I'd like to ask Yuri Kocayama to accept this honor on behalf of all of her contributions to the Civil Rights Movement. She's come all the way from Oakland today to be with us. We can have you stand up for a second. Everyone will be speaking outside so that the council can move on with their business. I also want to acknowledge a man I've known now for probably a decade or more, the Honorable Judge Ron S.W. Liu, if you could please come to the podium. Judge Liu is a native son of Los Angeles, the third of nine children. His father was a Chinese launderer who immigrated from Guangdong Province and operated the Mandarin Laundry in downtown Los Angeles. And on May 7th, 1987, then-President Ronald Reagan appointed Judge Liu to the federal branch, where he now serves in the Central District of California. He is the first, the first Chinese-American appointed as the United States District Judge in the continental United States. Judge Liu, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, I hereby present to you the Spirit of Los Angeles Award for your numerous contributions to ensuring that everyone has equal access to civil and human rights. Also with us, if I could ask Andrew and Peggy Churn. Andrew and Peggy are also two individuals I've known for about a decade. Andrew is the chairman, founder and chairman, and his wife, co-chair of Panda Restaurants. They're the heart and soul of that company. Under their guidance, they've become the largest Chinese food service provider in the United States of America, and it all started in 1973 with Panda Inn, using treasured family recipes. Now there are more than 800 locations in 34 states today. You talk about the American dream, this American dream that happens every single day, is happened with the entrepreneurial spirit. Andrew and Peggy believe in America, but they also believe in giving back, and these are two people who have given back to this community, to the entire city and the nation. They're the adoptive parents of a young panda in China named Pei Pei, for whom they provided financial support, and with Andrew and Peggy's leadership, Panda Restaurant Group has supported the Zoo Atlanta and the San Diego Zoo, and since they're supporting so many zoos, they'll be supporting the Zoo of Los Angeles in just a moment. So on behalf of the city of Los So on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, I hereby present to you the Dream of Los Angeles Award for all that you've done to build your business and to make a stake in this great country. Sammy Leeder, please join us at the podium. I'll tell you, you talk about a, you talk about a role model. Sammy won a gold medal in the platform diving at the 1948 London Olympic Games and a bronze from the springboard. He's the first person of color to receive the prestigious James Sullivan Award in 1954, and was the first Asian-American to win the Olympic gold for the USA. But he didn't stop there. Won another gold medal in platform diving in 1952 at the Helsinki Games as well. And Dr. Sam, as he's affectionately called, graduated from the University of Southern California Medical School in 1947. He was one of the first Asian-American physicians to practice in Orange County. And so on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, I hereby present to you the Hope of Los Angeles Award for pioneering the way for Asian-Americans and other minorities to participate in international sporting competitions. His wife, his beautiful wife, Rosa Linda, is also here with us today. Finally, I'd like to acknowledge the artist of this beautiful piece of art that's here to my right, that'll be on the cover of the magazine, the monthly calendar. Her name is Haven Lynn Kirk. celebrate Asian Pacific Islander American Heritage Month today. We're going to go outside and do a couple of things. I'm going to hand the microphone to Ed Reyes. And let me just say that Ed has represented the Chinatown area for really more than a decade. When you think that he was the planning deputy for Mike Hernandez, and as a council member, he's very, you know, he's loved and in that community, and he is because he recognizes how important and vibrant a community is, Ed Reyes.
First, I want to thank our Mayor, Villagosa, and our Council President Garcetti for having this great celebration, this great day. When I go to the family dinners, the associations, when I go to the grand openings of our senior facilities, when I see the childcare centers, when I see the struggles of our immigrants who come to this great country and actually pull together their resources and organize for the benefit of family and children, that truly is the prize, and that truly is the reward we have as a city, to have such a strong presence of talented, artistic contributors to this great society. And for that, we deserve a month to celebrate the diversity in the cultures and the strength that they've brought to this great community fabric we call Los Angeles. So to them, I say, "Thank you. I'm humbled to be here, to celebrate such a great event, and to thank the mayor and the council for allowing this event to be pronounced and amplified in such a great way. Have a great month." Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much. We will be outside. We invite everybody out there. We know that around this entire horseshoe, whether it's Mr. Weston and Mr. Labange, and in Koreatown, whether it's Ms. Han with the Korean Bell every year, whether it's everything Mr. Cardenas does with the South Asian community, I mean, we can go straight through, and of course, as I mentioned before, Ms. Perry representing Little Tokyo and being such a strong voice, Mr. Weezer with the Filipino community, everybody here in this council embraces and is able to grow in terms of how we represent this city because of the strength behind us in the American dream that is embodied by the Asian Pacific American community. So thank you very much, Madam President. I know it's been a long morning, colleagues, but we invite everybody out to the celebration, and we thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti and Mr. Mayor, and to all the participants today. Thank you very much. Okay, council members, we are now asking Madam Clerk to open the roll and begin our session today. No, they are still here.
Cardenas, Grohl, Han, Weezer, Labange, Padilla, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendale Smith, Weiss, Weston, Zine, Garcetti, 13 members present, and a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First item of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Garcetti moves, Mr. Weston seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Weston moves, Ms. Perry seconds.
Before beginning of the regular agenda, Madam President, there is, are two items that have been requested to be continued. Item number 18, that's a request to continue that matter for one week, and the new date would be April 28.
Seeing no objection, item number 18 will be continued for one week.
And also a request on item number 49 to continue that matter to Tuesday, and that would be April 25.
That item will be continued to April 25.
On the regular agenda, items noted for public hearings, items 1 through 8 are street lighting ordinances, and I believe there are cards on 1, 5, and 8, if you wish to call those special.
Yes, those will be called special.
And then that would leave before council 2, 3, 4, and 6, and 7.
Madam Clerk, open the roll on those items. Close the roll, tabulate the votes.
13 ayes.
Those items have been approved. Next items?
Next items are also public hearing items, and the action for council would be to open the hearings and continue the hearings and ordinances to May 12.
That's item number 9.
That would be 9 through 17.
9 through 17. Seeing none of those items being called special, Madam Clerk, open the roll.
Madam President, those are just going to be continued to?
Just to be continued.
May 12.
Okay, those will be continued to May 12. Thank you.
Next items on the agenda are items for which public hearings have been held, items 19 through 36. 18 has already been acted upon.
Thank you. And colleagues, any specials on those items?
Madam President, there are two reports on item 36, a majority and a minority report, and I believe there is an amending motion that has been distributed also.
We will call item number 36 special. Any other specials, colleagues? If not, Madam Clerk, open the roll on the remaining items, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
13 ayes.
Those items have been approved. Next item?
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 37 through 48, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Any specials, colleagues, on those items? Seeing none of those, no one calling any special, Madam Clerk, open the roll on those items, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
13 ayes.
Those items have been approved. Next item?
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 37 through 48, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Any specials, colleagues, on those items? Seeing none of those, no one calling any special, Madam Clerk, open the roll on those items, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
13 ayes.
Those items have been approved. Next order?
On the continuation agenda, item number 50 is an item for which public hearing has been held. That was continued from Wednesday's meeting.
Okay. Anyone wish to call that item special, item number 50?
You received it.
You received, okay, thank you, Mr. Parks. Seeing no objection, that item will now be before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
13 ayes.
Those items, that item has been approved. Next item?
Madam President, do you wish to recess the regular meeting and go into the special meeting, or do you wish to take the items called special or public comment?
We'll quickly go into the special item, if anything is called special agenda, if anything's called special, we'll move back there, so.
Okay. Labange, excuse me, Cardenas, Grohl, Han, Weezer, Labange, Padilla, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendale Smith, Weiss, Weston, Zine, Garcetti, 13 members present, and a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. First item on the agenda.
All the items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 1 through 3, 10 votes are required for consideration, and I believe on item number 1, there is some wording that needs to be added. Mr. Parks is going to do that.
Mr. Parks?
Special on special one.
Special, okay, we will call that special.
That would leave before council then 2 and 3, which are both with track map and a parcel map.
Mr. Weiss?
I'd like to make an introduction, Madam President.
Please.
We now have group 2 of the three groups from the Westwood Charter School. You guys are Westwood, right? So kids, stand up and wave. We are really happy to have, we've got 120 kids total coming today. Here's another 40 from the Westwood Charter School. Welcome to City Hall, guys. You're going to be on TV tonight.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weiss. Takes us back to the agenda, item number 2 and 3 on the special agenda. Anyone want to call those items special today? If not, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
13 ayes.
Those items have been approved. Next item?
And Madam President, while you're in the special meeting, do you wish to take up item number 1 at this time, that was called special by Councilmember Parks?
No, we will go back, we will recess this meeting, go back to the original meeting, and actually take public comment. So we'll recess this item, and we'll go to public comment. We do have a public comment card from our Van Nuys offices. Like to see if we can hook up there with Bruce Darian. Mr. Darian? If you could hold on one minute, we don't have your audio. Can you try again, see?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, council members. My name is Bruce Darian. I'm at 703 Pierre Avenue in Hermosa Beach, area code 310-428-8131. I'm here once again to speak to the council about the Malibu Pier, the relationship of the city to the pier and to the Los Angeles River, the pollution to it. I know you were talking about Earth Day this morning regarding the pollution to the river. The Malibu Pier has been gone, has gone on for 11 years, being closed. It is one of the largest corrupt state contracting projects in California. The Los Angeles River is being polluted by polluters such as Pepperdine University, Tapia Reclamation Facility, City of Malibu. That water is diverted to the Los Angeles River, which this city council has jurisdiction over. I'm here to explain to the public that there is a website that's available, www.malibu pierscandal.com, that they can go to. And we have a petition that's going to Congress. We have several hundred signatures, going into the thousands, which are going to Senator Feinstein, Boxer, and Brad Sherman over this Malibu Pier debacle. I appreciate being here and having the opportunity to speak, but I can clearly see that the city council has taken no action in regard to the corruption involving the Malibu Pier and how it relates to past city officials, as I have spoken before, namely Ex-Mayor Rudden. I know Mr. Rosenthal's district, the 11th district, has Gladstone's Restaurant, which Mr. Rudden has possession of that contract with the Department of Parks and Recreation, and has behind-the-scenes deals with the Department of Parks and Recreation at the Malibu Pier. The pollution that's been going on at the Los Angeles River has been falsified as being stormwater runoff, when in fact, it is treated sewage runoff that is dumped nightly through the Los Angeles River. And I encourage people to go down to the river in the evenings and watch the flow of water that goes down the river as it has been discharged from Tapia Reclamation Facility. The city has been taking, has been going on a long time in deceiving the public how that water gets to the river and where it comes from, and the public needs to be educated on that. We have a lot, long way to go in cleaning up the environment and uncovering the fraud that's associated with the pollution to it by way of these awards that are being presented by people that are not?
Sir, if I could ask you just to conclude, the two minutes has concluded.
Yes, I'll finish up with, once again, malibu pierscandal.com. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next group of speakers actually are the representatives from the South Central Farmers. We have Tati Lubaviski Acosta, Vanessa Acosta, Jose Corones, Vermiias Zapata, I'm not sure the first name, but Mendoza, O Mendoza, Araceli, Alberto. And before we do that, excuse me, I'm sorry, Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Cardenas would like to make an introduction.
Thank you. The 3rd graders from Morningside Elementary are here. Morningside serves the children of the city of San, stand up, please. They're way in the back for the cameras, way to the cameras. Morningside Elementary children are here from the 3rd grade, and these are children who live in the city of San Fernando and the city of Los Angeles. Welcome and thank you for coming.
Thank you very much. Please.
Thank you. Good morning, honorable ladies and gentlemen of the council. It has been a long and sometimes rocky three years that we have been visiting these exalted chambers. We have pleaded, implored, and begged you to rescind your decision to sell the land at 41st and Alameda to the developer, Ralph Horowitz. You have always been gracious and afforded us the opportunity to speak, and for that we thank you. Some meetings have been more passionate than others, but for us, the destruction of a small green lung in a greedy and most polluted portion of the CD9 is a passionate issue. Besides, passion's often come in light when lowly citizens undertake a battle against those with the power and wealth, especially when fighting City Hall. We have fought hard and we have fought long. We have endured hit pieces in the media, mudslinging and fierce politicking, but we've not been up, we have not given up. We're convinced that our cause is just and backed by the First Amendment of the Constitution of the United States. We have preserved, persevered, and attracted supporters from all over the world. We have reached a point in our struggle with Ralph Horowitz that has agreed, that he has agreed to negotiate a sale involving a trust for public land with the help of Alina Bach. For the reason we have, for that reason, we have come today to extend an olive branch to all of you. We hope that this exalt- today to extend an olive branch to all of you. We hope that this exalt, this and all of you and exalted body join us in our dynamic, with our dynamic new mayor, as well as thousands of other Angelinos in expanding our city's green space. It is imperative that we join hands in fighting global warming and feed the families below the poverty line. We are, we are our brothers' keepers. We are passing out some olive branches, and also, we are starting our first fundraiser to start to raise more money. We're going ahead, and you're invited to come to our first fundraiser. I asked the city, I left a message there, we're having speakers. I never received a call back from the city people to see if they had anybody there to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good morning, City Council. My name is Araceli Catoa. You have a chance to help us save this South Central Farm. Do whatever, whatever you can to help, to save this beautiful green space. Please support the South Central Farmers. Thank you.
Good morning, City Council members. My name is Alberto Catoa, South Central Farmer and a current East Los Angeles Community College student. Today, we witness a lot of, a lot of things going on here about environmental justice, and that's what the South Central Farmers have been doing for the past three years, trying to preserve something for the community, something that provides so many benefits. And now we're here to ask you to join us, let's join forces to fundraise to save the largest urban farm in the nation. It's a valuable gift that the community provides to the citizens of Los Angeles, and it's something that should be emulated. And hopefully, hopefully, thanks to us, other districts will also have their own community gardens where the community could benefit as a whole, and be a gathering for the citizens of your districts. The South Central Farm provides fresh fruits, safety, nutrition, a lot of things that are beneficial for our community. So, we're here today to ask you, once again, it's been three long years, three hard, long years, and we have shown you our determination in trying to preserve this community, this environment for our community because it's beneficial, it's positive, it does a lot of things for us. So, we're here today to ask you, once again, to start, step up to the plate and start fundraising with us. We will do our share also as well in trying to buy this property from Ralph Horowitz. Y aquí estamos, y nos vamos. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else want to speak from, please? Welcome.
Yes, good morning. My name is Bahar Badiz Adigan. I'm here in support of South Central Farmers. I'm here to plead from the bottom of my heart for mankind to understand and acknowledge the fact that we are all products of the earth, and our original state and our, our original sources all come from the earth. And with that being in a healthful, nourishing state, it will, it will help not just our bodies, but our minds and our spirits. And that is beneficial to all mankind, and it's evident and inevitable for mankind to reach out back to the earth, which is what our whole entire existence has really been blessed by and nourished by every day. Clean water, good air, holistic life is inevitable for the health and well-being of mankind, indeed, and I stand for that with heart and soul, and I ask for nothing back but just well-being and happiness of children and people, and peace and harmony. So, I hope and pray that you can understand that and acknowledge and value it beyond monetary gain, because it means so much more. You can't really buy health beyond what God has blessed through the earth. And I have, I have a very deep feeling that that will reveal itself as a revelation to all mankind to return back as, as the original state that we were all born and raised in. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other speakers on this comment? I know we were given a card just now. Samuel Sanchez is here, please.
Hello, my name is Tati Lubaviski Acosta, and I am here in support of the South Central Farmers, and I would like to, I'd like to wish you a happy Earth Day on behalf of the largest urban farm in the United States.
Thank you. Mr. Sanchez, like to speak on this topic, or Dele Aliman? Anybody else on the South Central Farm? Mr. Aliman? Then we'll go to the other cards that are here, too. Please.
Respected council members, if the record is correct, I am informed that a member of this city council has recently given an award, a citation of commendation to the South Central Farmers. I wish that the member of the city council, the councilman who recently gave an award to the South Central Farmers, this commendation would be willing to publicly read this commendation on record. We have received all kinds of commendation from across the country, from across the world, from Occidental College, and it is very pleasing to the South Central Farmers that a member of the LA City Council also sent a commendation. We do not want city council members who will visit the farm after ten PM. We have an open invitation to all members of LA City Council to visit the South Central Farms, to join in the celebration of the Earth Day. The mayor, in the recent statement on the state of the city, spoke of his vision for a green Los Angeles. We think this is an opportunity especially for the councilwoman in the ninth district, our sister Jan Perry, and Mayor Villagosa, to leave a heritage for green Los Angeles behind by helping to save the South Central Farms. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Aliman. Mr. Sanchez, would you like to speak on this item? If not?
I have some papers for the council.
Thank you. We'll make sure the sergeant-at-arm gets them.
I had some of the Pacific Islander people make this. It says environment. It seems like everyone has a word for it, and our word in Los Angeles for it is disappearing, I think. This little cabbage here is in danger of losing its home. We need someone to desperately adopt it. If you or anyone that you know has a home that it could live in, we would greatly appreciate that. I think his name is Aselga, but this isn't the only one. There's hundreds, if not thousands, of these that are gonna lose their homes if people don't do something about it. And I think I know who those people could be, and since it's in Jan Perry's district, I think she would be a good opportunity. At least, that's what it says on the website for the Environmental Affairs Department when it talks about creating a community garden. You guys have the paper, and it says, paragraph two, "This is also a good time to contact your city council member who can provide much support and assistance throughout the process of creating your garden." Also, if you look at the other papers I included, the first paragraph says, "Environmental Affairs Department was established on ordinance twenty-nine, June twenty-nine, nineteen eighty-nine to establish a capability within the city to address environmental issues in a coordinated and centralized manner." If you look down on the second paragraph, I highlighted a part that said, "Citywide environmental initiatives should be implemented, securing and assisting others in securing resources for the implementation of environmental initiatives." You can find those on the website. One thing you won't find on the website, though, if I can conclude, is there's a link for a children's gardening project for schools in LAUSD, and the link wouldn't work when I tried to click on funding and grant opportunities. Maybe it's a broken link. Maybe you guys could fix that. I don't know what's going on.
We'll check that out. Thank you very much, Mr. Sanchez. We appreciate your testimony today. Our next speaker is Michael Hunt, to be followed by Matt Dowd dot com.
Good morning. I'm here again. My name is Michael Hunt. I've been arrested twenty-four times for selling Shea butter on Oceanfront Walk after they sold me a permit. They sold twelve hundred of these permits, but what they don't tell you that it was protected under the federal constitution. I'm here with Carol Sobel's preliminary injunction, stating the facts of this injunction, that we were covered under the First Amendment, that the table of contents from the federal government said that we were protected up under the First Amendment. Here's the cases that have already been won in federal case law, and Mark Brown says that the LA municipal code supersedes the federal law. The last page, it says, "The second that is solicited for donation by nonprofit organization for religious purposes that it inexplicably intertwines with our faith that we're able to take donations on the boardwalk." This has been an ongoing thing. I'm in court right now with it, but there's a case that was won in appellate court two years ago, ESOP Benson versus the City of Los Angeles, that has already been won for oils and incense. My question to all of you guys, to all my councilpeople, why is this not being supported by the councilpeople, and why is the law being broken that's already been supported by the federal constitution? Please help me understand this. Why am I going to court? Why are we spending the taxpayers' dollars on something that's already been adjudicated in federal law? And we have the table of contents right here to provide all the cases that have been won already in the federal law, in the Ninth Court District, ESOP Benson versus the City of Los Angeles.
Thank you very much. Matt Dowd, is our next speaker? Mr. Dowd here?
Thank you very much. My name's Matt Dowd. I'm one of the guys from Venice Beach. I sell a little incense thing that has Victoria's Secret perfume in it, and a few other little things that I designed. It's a creation. All my customers know where to find me, because I'm always in the same place, and they come from all over the state and all over the city. And I wanted to ask, you know, some of the council members whether they, in fact, asked any of their constituents who visit me at the beach, and they're from the valley, you know, from Eric's neighborhood, you know, and they come from Long Beach, and they come from, you know, North Valley, Greg Smith's constituents, Mr. Wesson, I mean, that's in central, your area, too, you know, and every time they come to the beach, and I tell them, you know, they say, "What's going on?" I'm like, they're like, "I can't believe that nobody ever told me." And they're the people who are having all this taken away from them, not, not just us. I mean, it is our livelihood, but people from the valley come over to get jewelry and handmade, you know, it's, that's what Venice is all about, and that's how it became one of the, came the second, you know, biggest tourist attraction in California. And, you know, it's not because people want to come down and buy a commercial T-shirt out of a store that you can buy anywhere. So, you know, my question is, were the people of the city really consulted, or does everyone just say, "Oh, well, Bill Rosenthal said this is what everyone wants of Venice"? I still have a problem with his field deputy right now, Mark Antonio Grant, because they keep telling me that he's handling my, my case, the letter I sent last September twenty-eight. They've lost the video that showed how I make my incense, so...
Thank you, Mr. Dowd.
I'm still waiting for that. It's been a week since I was in the office over that little shoot.
Appreciate it. Our next speaker is Zuma Dogg. Mr. Dogg here?
Zuma Dogg was escorted from the building by the police because he was shooting a trailer intro to his, his regular speech. So, can I, if I can take his two minutes?
I'm sorry, you're not able to. If he's here, he could yield his own time, but I'm sorry, I'm out of rules. Thank you.
Twenty seconds, right.
Okay. Can Dido Morris?
I just want to apologize to his fans, because I know they're all watching out there, and that's a regular segment now on the city.
Mr. Morris is our next speaker. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members. Just say the mayor presented his budget for the upcoming year, and it's called Tough Choices for a Brighter Future. I don't think it's gonna be tough, because I believe this council and this mayor are going to work together for what's best for the City of Los Angeles, because if you take a look at that budget, it has to do with public safety, and I believe each and every one of you want to see more police officers on our streets. We want, we want more libraries. Libraries open, and I apologize for pronouncing that. We want to make sure that our traffic situation is taken care of. We want to make sure that we don't lose any more of our children. LA Best is probably one of the best programs we have, but we need to expand on that. The mayor talked about intervention and prevention programs, but he mentioned something new. He called it re-entering programs, and that's dealing with people that were former gang members who have given up the life and now are trying to do the right thing, and we need to set aside money for them, because they have a big influence on what takes place on the streets. So, Mr. Mayor, excuse me, Mr. President, council members, please, I hope we can go through this budget quickly, do what's best for the people of Los Angeles, because this is a great city council, and we have a great mayor. Let's work on together.
Thank you very much, Mr. Morris. Linda Jo Wright is our next speaker.
I wanted to say I'm a big admirer of Channel Five, KT, LA, Bicoastal Flowers. Oh, and I wanted to give this, if you would, give this to Councilwoman Grohl. It's something to do with Transportation Department.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. And Bill Hui is our final speaker for public comment. Welcome, Mr. Hui.
Good morning, Councilman Garcetti. Good morning to all the esteemed members of the Los Angeles City Council. My name is Bill Hui, and I work for the Florentine Gardens in the capacity of public relations. Council President Garcetti, I was corrected, and the members of the city council. I just want to focus a little spotlight on something that's gonna come before the city council this coming Tuesday at ten o'clock for a vote regarding the four-year-old eminent domain process that's been going on against the Florentine Gardens. If I can give this to the police officer, so he can give a copy...
Sure, we'll have one of the sergeants-at-arms to get that. We can have one of the sergeants-at-arms, please. Go ahead, we'll make sure you get it.
All right. Anyway, speaking for the Florentine Gardens, the employees, and all our supporters, we want this council to know that we support the LA Fire Department. We admire and respect those men and women who put their lives on the line every day. If they're dealing with this issue for more than four years, we've come to realize that the main issue here is more serious than building a fire station for a possible one hundred million dollars, the destruction of a Hollywood landmark, or the closing down of a twenty-seven-year-old business using the power of eminent domain. Concerning the new Fire Station eighty-two, what this really is about, and has always been about, is a special interest group of wealthy people who live in the Highlands and Beechwood Canyon versus the low-income community who are mostly minorities who live in the Lowlands, East of Western Avenue in Hollywood. It is the moral duty of government to provide equal protection for all people. Governments should not cater to the wealthy and ignore the poor. We know quite well what happened in Louisiana when Hurricane Katrina broke the levee, and the poor people, mostly minorities, were flooded out. Many died. In previous years of wealthy in Louisiana who live in the Highlands were not worried about the levee because it would not affect them, so they never used their influence to make sure it was well-maintained. We have the identical same situation here. If the City of Los Angeles caters to a wealthy special interest group from the Highlands, we will be putting the entire community at risk in the Lowlands. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hui, and that will be agendized next week sometime. We appreciate you coming down here. All right, that closes our public comment for now. We will now return. Yes, Mr. Zion?
There was an error. I'd like to have it reconsidered, so I can continue it till Wednesday, please.
Item twenty-two, okay. Is there any objection to reconsideration of twenty-two? If not, let's open the roll on reconsideration. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, that is back before us. Would you like to continue that?
Till Wednesday, please.
Till Wednesday, the twenty-sixth of April. If there's no objection to that, that'll be unanimous vote, so.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. All right. And I was also asked to go forth with on item twenty-three, if we can do that, Madam Clerk, and if we can return to the regular items called special.
The first item called special, Mr. President, is item number one, and that was called special for a card from the public.
Okay. Item number one we have before us, card from the special. Sylvia Hawkins, would you like to come forward on item number one right now? You have two minutes. Welcome.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Sylvia Hawkins. We must say no on school hours goes until nine, pardon me, five o'clock PM. United States of America, pre-school hours, picking up children is awful for all parents. The pressure of single women's parents, ninety percent of no fathers, is helping... The pressure of single women's parents, 90% of no fathers, is helping picking up childrens. There must be more recess and lunch breaks for all childrens. New laws for all schools for hours in school must be from 8:00 p.m. until 1:30 p.m. Schools is out. We must give our children rest from books and more time for activities. We must not follow Mayor Antonio Varecas' style of other governments, like Idio of working our children, our kids, overtime. Children have duties and jobs after school to complete before the next day. We must remember all disaster, mudslides, earthquakes, et cetera, to help children, to keep them in school of the speed of the 16th note and not going too fast of the 32nd note, of speed of in music, working them too hard, walking, eating, and in making too many quick decisions. Again, I am with no rap music for any schools because of the speed of rap music that is taking our kids offbeat. I'm asking for Antonio Varecas to please do not overwork our kids looking at other governments disasters that is in Idio, Iran area, Africa area, and now here with a plan from all mayors. Thank you very much. My name is Sylvia Hawkins.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins, for your thoughts on the Darlington and Westgate Avenue lighting district. Anybody wishes to be heard on this? If not, please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number five was called special for a card from the public.
Okay. I'd like to invite Mike O'Gara forward. Thank you for your patience, sir, and welcome to City Council. You have two minutes, public comment.
My name's Mike O'Gara. I'm with the Sun Valley Area Neighborhood Council. I'm here to thank Mr. Padilla and his staff for all the hard work they've done on this 9/12 Commission. We very much endorse seven people being assigned by the neighborhood councils. Neighborhood councils have matured greatly in the last year and a half or so.
I'm sorry, sir.
And we understand that it's not just a neighborhood issue, it is a citywide.
I'm sorry, sir. If you could just pause for one moment, we'll pause the clock as well. Let's just take up, I thought that was the card for item six. I believe we don't have a card for that one, Madam Clerk. Do you know of any card? We have, sorry, item five?
No, that was for item five, and I don't believe there's a card for five.
Okay, why don't you hold on. We'll continue your comments in just a second. Let's take the vote on item five then. You can open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Let's take up item 36 and we'll continue, sir, with your testimony. I'm sorry, my apologies.
Okay. We believe that the makeup, as Mr. Padilla has put it together, is excellent. The only caveat that we have, or I have, is the members of the 9/12 Commission really should be residents of the city, not non-residents. They don't have to be registered voters because you don't have to be a registered voter to be a member of the neighborhood council, but they definitely should be residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And I'd like to apologize that I think I had a card that was misfiled under item five. We will be taking up the rest of 36 in just a moment, but wanted to make sure we heard your comments, sir. If we can hold 36 on the desk and take up item number eight now? That was called special for a card from the public too, Madam Clerk? Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay. Linda Jo Wright, if you'd like to come up? Is Ms. Wright still here? I don't see her anymore, so let's close public comment on that. On item eight, if we can please open the roll on item eight? Close the roll on item eight? And tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Now, we'll come back to item 36. Before we continue with public comment, I do want to turn it over to the council members who want to be heard on this. Did the chair of the committee want to hear public comment, continuing with that first, Mr. Padilla? Or would you like to first make a few comments and then?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, let me take just a minute to give an overview of the item that's before us, but actually ask that we hear from the public first. Colleagues, what's before you is a result of several committee hearings on the issue of the creation of a charter mandated commission to review the neighborhood council structure that we've had in the city for several years now. If you recall, a couple, well, a month and a half ago, on Friday, March 10th, this council took an action to dot the timeline by which a lot of decisions were going to be made as it pertained to the creation of the commission. The name of the commission, the timeframe for the commission, the scope of review, its meeting requirements, et cetera, et cetera. But clearly, the biggest piece of the decision that needed to be made by the committee and recommended to the full council is the sizing of the composition of the commission. Now, for the public's benefit, we have two proposals before us today. One, that the majority report from the committee that calls for a commission that includes seven representatives of neighborhood councils by planning area, five appointees of the mayor, four by the president, three by the president pro tem. We have a minority report from the committee that asks that every council member have an appointee to the commission. And what's been taking place earlier today is additional conversations between the council president, the mayor, myself, Janice Hahn, who's very passionate about this issue. And there's going to be another alternative that I think we're all getting more and more comfortable with. But be clear that my mandate is to ensure that the neighborhood councils are represented as directly as possible from each of the seven planning areas. So, we want to hear from the public on this item, and then when we come back, I think we'll have a possible final agreement on a third alternative here for the council to consider today.
Thank you. All right, so we'll call on our speakers right now, starting with Mr. Jim McQuiston. And after Jim McQuiston, we will go to Jill Banks. Go ahead.
Jim McQuiston, East Hollywood Community Association. At one of the committee hearings, someone asked the city attorney why she was still looking in this old, thumbed-up voter pamphlet when she was making rulings. And the reason is because we who are very active in legal matters know this is the Bible, the voter pamphlet. If it isn't in here, it doesn't go in court. And what it says in here is that both of these methods of selecting the commission are not in accordance with law. It's very, very plain, and any judge will tell you that, unfortunately for everyone. We have given you another alternative, and that is to put it out to a contractor. The reason that we want to do that is because the mayor also has the power to replace any commissioner at any time for any reason whatsoever. So, regardless of what it says about the selection of this commission, immediately the mayor can say, thank you very much for your service, we will get somebody else, and here is my nomination, because that's what the charter says. In order for that not to happen and for the whole thing not to be delayed, the best alternative is to have an outside contractor. Because once the city makes a contract with an outside contractor for the commission, the city can't really fire the contractor without cause. And that makes the whole system work. And, believe me, there will be some fireworks over this in the future. We don't want the budget strained with all the litigation and all the delay. We want this conducted as I believe the city is the best in this country, and that's why I suggest that we go with the suggestion that you have before you in my submission.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jill Banks Barad. Welcome to City Council.
Good morning, Council President Garcetti and members of the City Council. I'm Jill Banks Barad, and I'm here today representing the Valley Alliance of Neighborhood Councils, which is an organization in the Valley that represents all 30 of the neighborhood councils. The alliance supports the majority report from the Education Neighborhoods Committee because it ensures that neighborhood councils will be at the table. And while we agree that there needs to be a broad mix of representation on this commission, we believe that the commission should have a composition of at least 51% of actual city council leaders. Neighborhood council members have the knowledge and their real-life experiences to evaluate and make recommendations that could have significant impact on neighborhood councils. The commission needs to evaluate neighborhood councils' relationship to DUNN and the excessive rules, regulations, and requirements imposed by DUNN. Hopefully, the commission will streamline this process. I want to thank the committee for including two of the Valley Alliance's proposals. One was that we have a member chosen from each of the planning commissions, planning committees. That is, we were the first ones to suggest that a member, a neighborhood council member be chosen from the planning committee, and thank you for putting that in there. That's very important to us. The other is that we recommended that there be training for neighborhood council people. Neighborhood council members need to understand the goals and the scope of neighborhood councils and their responsibility that's placed upon them when they are elected to a neighborhood council. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jill. Appreciate it. Lydia Mather is our next speaker, followed by Jeffrey Jacobberger after that. Welcome.
Good morning, President Garcetti, Council. My name's Lydia Mather. I'm a board member of the Van Nuys Neighborhood Council. Although I am not speaking for them, I am speaking for myself as a board member and someone been involved in neighborhood councils for nearly seven years. I would like to actually thank also Councilman Padilla because he did come out and talk to neighborhood councils and get their input. It was so very important that he did that. It is very important to consider and to include the guaranteed seats for seven neighborhood council members in this commission. I fully support this move as a current board member, and it would be impossible to evaluate neighborhood councils without this critical component. For those of us that have been involved since the early days, even before Greg Nelson, we possess vital knowledge of the process of the process, the bureaucracy pitfalls, and the messy business of democracy. I would even propose that the commission consider 51% of its body be made up of either past or current members of neighborhood councils. To relegate this important evaluation to academia or those without extreme intense contact with the process would rob this commission of its ability to produce accurate and efficacious results. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Jeffrey Jacobberger, followed by Jason Lyon.
Good morning, President Garcetti and members of the council. My name's Jeff Jacobberger. I'm the Secretary of the Mid-City West Community Council and the Chair of its Public Policy Committee. Our neighborhood council has adopted a position regarding the 9/12 Commission that would allow each city council member one appointment to the commission and that there be seven neighborhood council-selected members of the commission. We think that each neighborhood council should be given the opportunity to select, in accordance with its bylaws, one person to serve on the commission and then one elector. And then at the June 17th DUNN Congress, the electors from each of the seven planning areas will caucus and select a primary nominee and an alternate nominee, I guess to probably to be presented to the mayor's office. Our neighborhood council doesn't necessarily believe that neighborhood councils would have to nominate a neighborhood council board member. They could nominate whoever they feel is best qualified to serve on that commission. Just quickly, I'd like to thank council members Padilla, Hahn, Zine, Rosendahl, and Quezar for the attention they have given to this issue, for truly listening to the concerns expressed by members of neighborhood councils and addressing those concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Before Mr. Lyon, I want to recognize Mr. Weiss for a quick introduction.
Thank you, President Garcetti, and nice to see you, Jeff. I want to, you're the other kids from Westwood Charter, right? Isn't that you guys? Okay, guys, stand up if you're from Westwood. Stand up, you're going to be on TV. Colleagues, this is the final group of 40 kids from Westwood Charter, third grade. Welcome to City Hall, guys.
Mr. Padilla?
Mr. President. For introductions, we also have a group of third graders here from Morningside Elementary in the city of San Fernando. You guys want to stand up, see yourselves on TV? Morningside Elementary School, welcome to City Hall.
There you go. You can wave at the camera right now. There you go. All right. Thank you. Mr. Lyon?
Good morning, council members. My name is Jason Lyon. I'm Chair of the Governmental Affairs Committee of the Silver Lake Neighborhood Council, here representing an official position of my council. I will say that we adopted our position before either the majority or minority reports, so it's, we're not taking sides. It's, I think, something of a hybrid. We recommended for the commission membership, one appointment for each of the 15 council members, seven appointed by neighborhood councils by area planning commission area, and seven to the mayor. We very much appreciate President Padilla's committee, President Padilla's recommendation that the neighborhood councils appoint directly. I understand there's a complication in the language of the charter with that, but as close to direct as we can get, we would appreciate, and thank you for your consideration of this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lyon. Our next speaker is Candido Morris.
Mr. President, council members, Candido Morris, representing Van Nuys, excuse me, Vice President of Van Nuys Neighborhood Council, speaking for myself. I would just like to say that when the neighborhood councils first started, I didn't believe in them. But what I found and what I saw was, as time went on, it brought people together to work on issues. I don't believe the neighborhood councils should be micromanaging you as elected officials, but I believe that we should work together. And I hope that when you decide today, we'll reflect that because it's very, very important. And I want to thank you, Mr. Padilla, Ms. Hahn, Ms. Quezar, thank you very, very much. Mr. Rosendahl, thank you very much, because we need to hear what your opinions are. But again, neighborhood councils are here to stay, and let's make sure they remain.
Thank you very much. I'd like to recognize Mr. Padilla again.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, just to be clear and specific as to what we're proposing as an alternative, I wouldn't even use the word compromise. I think it's something that we all are buying into here, consensus. Configuration of the proposed commission is for each and every council member to have one appointment. So, that would make up 15 commissioners. The mayor will have 14 appointments, seven of those being based on the recommendations from the neighborhood council leaders within each planning area. Now, I know legally the mayor cannot be required to make these appointments. What we're legally saying is that we're asking for recommendations from the neighborhood councils. So, we're going to ask them to go through an exercise of coming together and talking to each other and working together. And within each planning area, if they can agree to a strong recommendation, I think the mayor and the council would appreciate that strong recommendation. If in a particular planning area, the neighborhood councils can't agree on one person, then Ms. Hahn's suggestion that every neighborhood council within that planning area, each making a recommendation, and then the mayor selecting from that pool of candidates, if you will. So, I think the onus is on neighborhood councils, the responsibility is on neighborhood councils to try to come together and reach some sort of consensus. So, seven of the 14 mayor's appointees will be based on neighborhood council recommendations. And then he'll have an additional seven to be direct appointees of the mayor without that, or any additional specific criteria. So, it's a total size of a commission of 29. 15 appointed by the council, 14 by the mayor, seven of those appointed by the mayor from neighborhood council recommendations, and seven independent of that. So, I think what I've offered is actually an amended version of Ms. Hahn's amending motion that we're all comfortable with. The other sort of modification to Ms. Hahn's amending motion would be in Part B of that second bullet point. Instead of requiring neighborhood councils to select the representatives at the Congress of Neighborhoods, we're suggesting that they may select their recommendations at the Congress of Neighborhoods. It may be a convenient opportunity for many neighborhood council leaders, but if certain parts of the city find a better alternative, a better date, a better location, they're certainly free to do that. So, with that, I would support the amending motion with those modifications as an amendment to the majority report, simply because the majority report speaks to the balance of the decision, the name of the commission, the timeframe, the meeting requirements, et cetera, and I think it's something that we're all more than comfortable with.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Ms. Han, to be followed by Mr. Weezer, and then Mr. Rosendahl. Ms. Han.
Where's my motion? Where's mine? Oh, well. Thank you, members. I introduced a minority report from the Education Neighborhoods Committee, because one of the things that was, two things were very important to me as we go to, as prescribed by the city charter that Dennis and I wrote, that we would, no later than seven years, review the neighborhood councils, talk about what they've done, maybe look at what's worked, what doesn't work, is there more bureaucracy that we can cut for neighborhood councils, or is there a way that they can be more empowered and be more effective as they weigh in on the decisions that we make here on the city council? So two things were important to me, and there's only one sentence in the city charter 9/12 section that says the mayor and the city council shall appoint this commission which will review the neighborhood councils. But two things were important to me. One is that each of us, the 15 of us around here, appoint our own person. I think that's important to add weight to this commission. I think it's important that our voices are also heard. While the neighborhood councils certainly represent areas of the city, we each represent, you know, about 250,000 constituents, and it's important for us to have our own appointee to this commission. It's also important that each of you, you know, pay attention to this review commission and that you have a stake in this review commission, because it really does, in the long term, affect how we make policy down here at the city council. So it's important for us to have a person on that commission. So my minority report says that we all get our own appointee. The other thing that was very important for me was that the neighborhood councils have a direct voice on this commission. Some people wanted to exclude them altogether from this review commission. Since we were reviewing neighborhood councils, did it make sense that we would actually have them on that commission that reviewed themselves? But I say yes, that is important, because there's a big difference between policy and theory and philosophy, and between what's really happening out there on a day-to-day basis in neighborhood councils. And I've spent five years as the mother of neighborhood councils, listening to a lot of the angst, listening to the troubles, listening to the growing pains, and I know that sometimes what we think here and what actually happens are two different things. So for me, having their voice on this commission was very important, which is why I suggested that also each, each area planning commission, seven, be able to nominate their representative, which I had in my minority report, that the mayor would appoint those seven people just to make it technically appropriate by the city charter, since they can't actually appoint a person, but they can nominate from the seven area planning commissions. I thought it would be a good idea that those area planning commissions nominate their person at our June 17 Congress of Neighborhoods. I thought they could caucus each area planning commission, they could have election speeches, they could nominate their person. But I've amended mine to say that they may select their representatives at the Congress of Neighborhoods. If they find a better way to do it, if they find a more appropriate, a better time that an area planning commission would like to do that, then I'm leaving them the flexibility either way to get their nominee from their area planning commission, their name to the mayor, so he can appoint them to this commission. I've also said that if they can't agree on one person, that they could nominate two people, and then the mayor could choose between those two people on who he appoints. So that's my minority report. I think that's, you know, more fair. I think that gives us a voice, it gets neighborhood councils a voice, and ultimately, I have great faith in this commission, that if they are really thoughtful and studious and really listen to all that is being said about how neighborhood councils have worked so far, that hopefully they will come back with very good recommendations to the city council, and if we have to put those before the vote of the people, we will. It is my belief that neighborhood councils will never go away. They are here to stay, they will change the way that we do business on the city council, but I know there are things we can do better. I know there are ways they can be more empowered, and I know there are ways that they can be more effective with us as we move forward to make the city of Los Angeles the world-class city that it is.
Thank you, Ms. Han. Our next speaker is Mr. Weezer, to be followed by Mr. Rosendahl and Mr. Cardenas.
As a member of the Education Neighborhood Council Committee, I want to first commend our Chair of the Committee, Councilmember Alex Padilla, who really was open-minded about this process and put a lot of time and effort, and I know his staff really put a lot of time and effort into making this possible. Having worked with Mr. Padilla on the Governance Commission for School Governance, I know how much time and effort this takes, and he really did his job as Chair of this committee to make this process. So very thoughtful and deliberative process. And also, we had the, the, we were able to get my colleague Janice Han's perspective on this. We all know how passionate she is about neighborhood councils as she just spoke, and her perspective on this has been very valuable. And what we arrived to today is really, I think, an example of a very deliberative process that brought in a lot of people, take them into, take different ideas into account, and come out with something that's very, very good. One of the things that was most important to me is that members of the neighborhood councils, people who know the system best, will have a voice in talking about how do we improve the current system that we have. And I think it also acknowledges the interest and role that this council plays in going forward with our neighborhood councils. I support this proposal and urge my colleagues to support it as well. I think as we go forward, we know that for as hard it wa, as hard as it was for us to come up with this solution, the commission is going to have a much tougher job in the deliberations and discussions. We're here to support you in any way we can. Council, former, our council member Padilla's motion that he put through committee and is before us here today describes a number of ways that this council and this city is gonna support the commission to make sure it fulfills its mission. And thank you very much to the neighborhood council members who showed up today in support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, please.
Ms. President, Vice President of the Van Nuys Neighborhood Council, before we proceed further, I just want to make one legal clarification to the amended report that's pending before us on item 36C.
And just on that, just to clarify for folks, because I think it's unclear. According to our clerk colleagues, what we have before us was there was amending motion that Ms. Han submitted that Mr. Padilla then further amended. Is that clear?
That's correct.
Okay. Please, continue, Ms. Pointix.
I just want to make one comment with respect to the recommendations that would come forth from the neighborhood councils. The pending amended, amended motion makes reference to at least of one nomination being selected by neighborhood councils residing in each of the area planning commission boundary areas. And it's our legal opinion that because the mayor is the appointing authority, that the neighborhood councils would have to submit at least one nomination from within each area planning area, to submit a pool of at least 14 recommendations from which, from which the mayor would select one from each of the neighborhood area planning commission areas. So the, so the neighborhood councils would submit two nominations from each of the area planning commission areas, submit a total of four to the mayor, from which the mayor would, would pick one per area planning commission area.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask some clarifications of both my colleagues, Janice Han and Alex Padilla, just to understand before I go forward. We're talking now 15, seven, and seven. Is that the numbers game? Okay. The 15 means we, each one of us 15, will appoint somebody. It can be a neighborhood council person or not a neighborhood council. True or false? Okay. Secondly, the seven that the planning commissions put forward, must they be part of the planning, must they be a neighborhood council person or not?
It's, it's not planning commissions that are putting those names forward, it's neighborhood councils grouped by planning area. Those neighborhood councils were being, we're asking them, and they're being, they're asking us to allow them to come together and put forward names as recommendations.
So like my particular planning commission, which goes into my colleague-
Not your planning commission. It's not your planning commission.
What is it?
The planning area that West LA Planning, all the neighborhood councils who are located within that planning area-
Planning commission area.
Were, right.
Yeah, so in my case-
The planning part only comes into the geographic definition.
Okay, I just want to get further clarification. My district, for instance, has eight neighborhood councils, but it is not the whole planning area. The fifth district, my colleague Jack Weiss-
Right.
-is part of it too. So whatever number of neighborhood councils he has, and whatever I have, would get together and they would make recommendations.
Correct.
And then the mayor would make the final determination on those recommendations.
Based on those recommendations.
Okay. Then on top of that, the mayor gets seven more?
Yes.
So really, the mayor is deciding 14 of the appointments to this commission. We are deciding 15.
Correct.
So why are you giving him 14?
That's, well, 14, seven of the mayor's 14 are based on the neighborhood council recommendations, and I'm, yes, I'm using my word selected.
That's correct.
The, so the mayor gets truly only seven to the independent, if you will, appointments.
He has seven complete independent, which could be whomever he wants.
Correct.
But the other seven, he does make that decision, but they will probably be neighborhood council leadership from the neighborhood councils within that planning area.
Correct.
Okay. All right. I just wanted a clarification. I want to say the following now, now that I got that, that information. Just as much as I want council files to be a process, that neighborhood councils have a role in so that they have real power and real effectiveness, I really think neighborhood councils should have a major role, not the complete majority role, but a very major voice within this process going forward, because the day-to-day experience that those leaders have had with the Brown Act, with all these other issues that they deal with, it would be great to make sure that they're truly represented within the mix that we end up with in this. And so I'm just hopeful that both the mayor's seven independent appointments and his seven group appointments, so to speak, or final decisions, is sensitive to that. And I intend, in my district, where I have eight neighborhood councils, to pick a person who is a member of a neighborhood council, so I can assure that aspect. Does that make sense, what I just said? Okay, thank you.
Okay. That's accepted as friendly. Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Reyes, Ms. Gruel, and then Mr. Padilla, unless somebody else for the first time.
This is a very important commission, and it's very important for everybody to understand that a lot went on in committee, a lot's been going on since committee, a lot's been going on today, and we have been listening to the people who've spoken here, we've been listening to the people who've been communicating with us, and I think it's critical that this version, I think, is the best version that we've come up with so far, because what it's doing, it's incorporating the person who's elected citywide, the executive of the city, the mayor. It's incorporating his input with seven members. That's, that's fine. I'm fine with that. That's good. But the two parts that I couldn't do without being an elected member of this body is the participation that the neighborhood councils forward those names, but because the charter doesn't allow you to point them directly, then you'd be forwarding them, in this case, to the mayor, but it's still your input, it's still your deliberation, it's still your own democratic process. And that, that's something that I don't think we could live without. In addition to that, I personally can't live without having an appointment, because to me, this is the continuation and another level of respect and appreciation and relationship with the neighborhood councils as individuals, with the new neighborhood council process, and this is something that, to me, I need to defend for the future representatives of each of these council seats, that they have someone that they can appoint, because I'm not gonna be here forever, none of us are gonna be here forever, because we have term limits. And the thing is, what we have to do here is craft something like we finally have that says all of the people who have a direct stake in this are having good representation and good opportunity to have representation. So I like this version, and I support this final version. And one of the things I wanted to clarify, Ms. Han, when this was being drafted, it's my understanding that the, the final language does have, because of one of the things that people said, well, if we have 20-some members, 30-some members, 40 members, it's gonna get unruly, it's hard to get a quorum, or what have you. The, the majority opinion of the, the majority of the committee was that it'd be 22 members. And in that case, which is the smaller version that we've been discussing since committee, was 22 members. And in that version, it would have taken 13 members to have a quorum. So it's my understanding that right now, even though it's grown to 29 members, it's still 13 members that'll require a quorum, so it doesn't become unruly where they can't have a quorum?
Gwen Pointix, Assistant City Attorney, currently, a quorum would be the majority of the total number, so it'll be more than 13, but the commission itself could determine once it's established whether they want to create rules of order that would, that would provide a smaller number for quorum if they so desire.
Okay, you said they could. Could we do that here?
You could mandate what the quorum is for this commission if it's that, if it's the desire of the city council to do so. We would direct that and put that in the ordinance.
Well, personally, colleagues, I think that's a proper balance, to have 13 of these members make a quorum, and, and I would like to recommend that as a friendly amendment to the motion, that it be 13 members required to have a quorum. Remember, this is citywide. If for some reason somebody prevails in an argument later, so, well, seven members is good. Remember, this is citywide, and seven members for this entire body of 29, in my personal opinion, would be too low. 13 members, I think, is a respectful number, and I think it's, it's a number much closer to a democratic process. So in the discussions I've had before bringing this to the floor, that's one of the things that was my understanding. I like that idea, I'd like to propose that as a friendly amendment.
Can we attach that, that city council meetings can be a quorum of seven, too?
It's up to them.
No, just kidding. Okay. That'll be accepted as a friendly amendment. Mr. Reyes is our next speaker, and then Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, colleagues. First, I want to thank Councilman Padilla for his stewardship. To his credit, he did, and he reminded me, he did offer and invited us to provide any input that can make this process be more efficient. So I want to thank him for that and that hard work. But to me, this whole debate is about balance. We are talking about a commission who's going to be evaluating neighborhood councils, but when you look at this rather eye-opening study by USC's Urban Initiative, the Urban Policy Brief, representing diversity in community governance, neighborhood councils in Los Angeles, 63 percent of the participants of the neighborhood councils are homeowners. 63 percent. When you look at the majority of the folks who live in the city, they are not homeowners. In my district, I'm up to, I believe, in the 78 percent range. Several council districts have the same profile. So for me, the question becomes, where is the balance? When you have folks who have, to their credit, the leisure, the ability, the time, the capacity to pay for the gas, to put in the car, to get to these meetings, not to worry about childcare, not to worry about their senior who's, who's ill at home, who can't afford a child provider for their alien senior, these are the real people who are in our city, and yet they are the ones who are hurt least. So from my point of view, I'm glad we have this flexibility, because it gives us a chance to appoint the neighborhood council folks who would love to be a participant but cannot because of economic or social barriers. This study says a lot about who is advising us. And let's remember, neighborhood council folks are folks who should be given a lot of credit, because they are donating their time, they're volunteering, but also need to put in perspective whose voice we're hearing and whose voice we're not. So this study gives us some insight, and it is about balance, and I hope we are able to reach an agreement today, but make an effort to have those who are evaluating this system to actually be the folks who live in the city. And when you look at the median cost or the median value now of homes over $560,000 to be a homeowner, let's ask ourselves, who are we listening to? So let's push on the balance. I will support the 15, 7, 7 scenario. Hopefully, it gives us a chance to appoint those women, those men who are single parents, those folks who are living at the, working at the poverty levels, who have something to say about the governance and the quality of life of their neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Our next speaker is Ms. Gruel, to be followed by Mr. Parks, Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, and there's always several days that I appreciate this council and the ability to have a discussion, a serious discussion of what's gonna be best for the city and an agreement to- a serious discussion of what's going to be best for, uh, the city and, uh, an agreement to compromise to ensure that we have the greatest participation, um, and particularly by those individuals who have, um, I think, taken the, the helm of the neighborhood councils and, and committed and dedicated countless hours, um, to, uh, our neighborhood councils. Mr. Reyes and I had a chance to talk a little bit about this this morning as well, and about the importance of, uh, ensuring our neighborhood councils are representative of the community at large, um, and to provide them sometimes with tools to do that. Um, we have challenges sometimes in being able to reach everyone in our district and the diversity of our district. Um, and I think it is critical that as the commission goes through this process, however many the, the numbers, uh, that we, we decide today, um, that they clearly have an understanding, um, and I know Ms., Ms. Hahn and, uh, Mr. Zein can provide some of that, uh, reflection, of what neighborhood councils were intended to do. Um, were they considered representative or participatory? How does that interrelate? And how can we take what USC, um, has done, and, and also people like Rafe Sunnenschein, who was very active in the, uh, original, um, and all the other commissioners, to ensure, um, that we have a perspective, not only of just what's happening today, but what was the original plan? And I think that's why the diversity of the people we appoint to this commission, citywide, is going to be critically important. Um, and so I, I support, uh, the, the compromise that is here before us to ensure all the voices are heard and appreciate particularly those neighborhood councils that came today, um, and to, to let your voice be heard. That's critically, uh, important. Um, to the city attorney, um, just a quick question as far as, you know, um, perception is everything. But the mayor does have a choice. I mean, if the neighborhood councils, I mean, them, them having to give two or three names, I think is, is cumbersome and challenging, um, for each of those, and really, if we believe in empowering them, them selecting an individual. Now, the mayor has the right to say no. I don't think he will say no, but I'm only saying that because if a judge or someone challenged it, um, the mayor could say no, come back with someone else. Um, so I would much rather have it in, in that form in which those APC areas and those neighborhood councils representing present one name, um, because they've come to an agreement. Um, and then in fact, legally, it's giving the mayor an opportunity because he can say no, rather than having to force them to have to do more than one. I think that sets up a, um, a problematic, uh, area for some of those, those people to say, "Who's one, who's two, who's three?" I just think it's better to say, "We're, we're giving you that authority." Hold my time for my last fifteen seconds.
Um, I understand that, but unfortunately, because of our timeframe, first of all, the proposals that have come forth so far didn't give the mayor the option to say no. The language that was presented said, "The neighborhood councils present one nominee, which the mayor would then appoint." That is actually a ministerial act on the part of the mayor that gives the mayor no discretion. Because this ordinance, but rather, because the, uh, appointees have to be made by June twenty-third for the process to go back and forth, I, I don't think we have that kind of luxury, which is why we recommend that come up with your pool of nominees upfront, from which the neighborhood coun, from which the mayor can make the appointment, so that the commission can be up and running by the deadline.
And, and you're saying we can't do that by June twenty-third because?
Well, because there's a thirty-one day, uh, effective date of the ordinance. Um, by the time the ordinance is approved by the city council, then has to go to the mayor, then has to be published, uh, and then it's effective thirty days after the adoption from the city, uh, council.
If, if I can interject just for a second here, uh, it doesn't mean that everybody's going to wait until June twenty-third to begin to transmit those recommended names. So I think we're blowing this out of proportion here.
Okay.
Uh, number one. Number two, from the conversations that I've had with numerous neighborhood council folks throughout the city, uh, I think they expect us already. They're already starting to talk internally. We're going to get it together. Uh, I think all, if not most, of the planning areas, neighborhood councils will come together, reach their consensus. And I think, from what I've heard, if it's only one name as opposed to multiple names that come forward, it's clearly understood, this is just a strong recommendation. And like Ms. Gruel said, the mayor has the option to say, "Go give me another name." So we don't, we're not required them, and I don't think it's necessary to require them to come forward with two, three, or four names at a time. So I think, I think we'll be all right, folks. I think there's enough mayor staff talking to council people, talking to neighborhood council people. We're going to be okay. We've just got to trust each other a little bit.
Here's, here's just a question and, and, um, of that. Let's just say, because I, I, I don't have, I know the mayor's office will be fine and whoever they submit, my, my challenge is, a neighborhood council gives three names, okay? They don't prioritize them. They don't, you know, and then the mayor picks one of them. Well, that wasn't their first choice, you know? And so there's no message, and I think what we were trying to do and rank, that's what I'm saying. If, if we would ask them to, to rank them, I think, again, I don't want to put the mayor's office or the na- we are trying to empower those neighborhood councils in that APC area. Um, and if, if we give three names and the mayor chooses one or the other, um, it, both people are going to be unhappy. So I think if we could add it, I don't know if it's a friendly amendment, that asks them to kind of rate their numbers, that would be a useful amendment. Is that a friendly amendment? Okay.
That's legally acceptable. That's not a problem.
There's no objection. That is accepted as a friendly amendment by everybody. Uh, Mr. Parks, Mr. Zein, and then Mr. Padilla to close.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just like to ask Janice or, or Mr. Padilla, on, uh, one question is that, in looking at the math, we're saying twenty-nine members, if we drop the quorum down to thirteen, it's the only organization I know that you could have a quorum with less than fifty percent, and then I would assume that action items would be by majority. That means one-fourth of the body can, can rule the roost. And so I'm just concerned that seven people can show up and, and, and vote on something and make policy for the city of Los Angeles, and those numbers just appear to be, to me, very, very slight when we're talking about bringing a body together of twenty-nine, having less than majority as a quorum, and then having seven of the thirteen be able to act upon items. And I just would like to see whether there's, in the sense of the thirteen, whether that's an appropriate issue to have less than majority there as a quorum, and then having, then the ultimate thing would be majority of that would be seven members. And maybe Tony can comment.
If I could respond to that?
Sure, yeah, please, Ms. Cardenas.
He's talking about my amendment. Um, well, actually, if you look at twenty-nine members, a majority is fifteen. So, uh, eight of those fifteen members could actually make a decision. If it's thirteen members for a quorum, seven members can make a decision. The difference is one. I was just trying to respect the argument of, of us growing this too big to where it becomes too cumbersome for them to be able to get quorums and things of that nature. So when you break it down, unfortunately, the difference when it comes to a majority of the vote is the difference between seven and eight. Uh, I was just trying to, uh, make it a little bit e, uh, more amenable for them to be able to gather enough people so they can commence a meeting, get going, et cetera, and then start their business and do more business, rather than having to forego a meeting and wait another month or what have you to get a meeting going.
You know, because one of the things we found in the eighth district is that we've had people that have been tied up in process so much that we, and many times, don't have meetings. But the, the, the issue is, is that if we're talking about evaluating, I would think that we'd want a larger quorum, so that we're mandating participation. Because these are supposed to be the most activists of the activists. And if you can't get fifty percent of the activists of the activists, then we have a process that may be dying on the vine. That's my concern. That it appears to me that if we have a committee of twenty-nine, we should expect the larger number to be there routinely, to have a quorum, and a larger number voting on the policy issues that we're expecting them to come forward on, rather than the smaller number.
Thank you. Mr. Zein?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I think the dialogue is good, coming from the charter commission and the city council, knowing what it was about, about inclusion, not exclusion. And listen to Mr. Reyes with his comments regarding the survey that shows all the people who live in apartments versus residents and the number of neighborhood councils who involve residents. And clearly, this broad city with all the diversity and all the conflicting interests, we need to have inclusion versus exclusion. I know that when secession came about, it came about because people didn't feel included. And I would go for more inclusion versus less inclusion. I know that Mr. Padilla spent a lot of time putting this together, and I think that if we exclude people, which if we limit it, we have to have it to a specific number to make it work, uh, we, we turn it against the communities that have complained that they haven't been included. And I'm, I'm very sensitive to the issue of inclusion in this program, in this, as we say, review of what neighborhood council's operation is all about. I've been to the, some of the congress neighborhood councils they've had at the convention center and see the participation, but there's still a lot of people, the four million people in Los Angeles, that don't feel included. They don't vote. They don't participate. How to reach out for them. But how we have the select group of people, we have to be all-inclusive with it. And the more numbers, to me, the better it's going to be. I would prefer, in my district, where I have six neighborhood councils, to select, but if I select the one, then there's going to be other neighborhood councils that are going to feel slighted because they weren't. But then, if I have in my district, the six come together and say, "Give me someone who we can agree upon" and throw that into the hoop with everyone else, maybe that's another option that we can have. And I know it's not going to make everyone happy, but clearly, we have to do something to review it and bring it up to standard. So, uh, I commend, uh, Councilman Reyes for bringing that point up. I never thought of that. I didn't see that report. But there's so many who are excluded because they're living in apartments, because they have childcare and financial issues. They don't participate. And the whole issue of secession was the valley felt they were being slighted. We want everyone included. So I would opt for more, the better, to have participation from the vast communities of Los Angeles.
Thank you. Ms. Gruel's our next speaker.
Uh, just an amendment, Ms. Hahn indicated, Ms. Hahn is, um, that, uh, we give the count, the, um, uh, each of the APC areas the option of rating, if they would like, or not, but that we give them that option. Because some may not want to choose their top priorities, and others may want to send that message. So this gives them the option, but I don't think it was clear before as to whether or not they needed, because we made the changes, versus one person versus a choice. So, um, as we describe it to them, we would say, "You have the option of ranking them, uh, or not." So that's my change in my amendment.
Okay, thank you. Um, Ms. Hahn, and Mr. Reyes, and then Mr. Padilla.
Well, thank you. That's what I was gonna, going to say. Colleagues, I feel like maybe we're still not getting it about empowering neighborhood councils. And, uh, I'm all for giving neighborhood councils those seven sort of guidelines on what we think might work. Uh, but to have us sit here today and mandate, uh, rules and regulations on those seven nominees that come from the neighborhood councils, I think, I think we're missing the point. Uh, I think these area planning commission areas, uh, should decide how they want to select their nominee, if they want, uh, their nominees. If they want to rank them, that's fine. If they don't, that's fine. Um, and, and even on the quorum issue, um, while I, you know, was trying to do something that I, that I thought made sense, again, maybe we leave it up to the commission, once they're seated, uh, to decide for themselves, uh, on the quorum issue. While, um, one thing to remember, you know, again, a guy, something I would recommend would be, um, I, I like the idea of the thirteen quorum, and when seven can make policy, that gives incentive for everybody to show up. And one of the things we've had trouble with, with the LAUSD commission, is we've had difficulties in terms of people showing up. Uh, this would give me an incentive to show up if I knew seven people, uh, could, uh, decide a recommendation. But again, I think maybe we're missing the point, and we ought to let the commission, once they're seated, uh, decide the quorum issue for themselves. Uh, and I also, again, let's, let's not tell them how to do this. Uh, I, I believe that, uh, they're going to come up with the best recommendations for their nominees, as well as the quorum issue. That would be my suggestion.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Reyes?
You know, just for the record, I want to make sure I understand what could happen, given the makeup of this body. When I look at forty-nine percent of the stakeholders in the member of these boards, when forty-nine percent are homeowners, eight percent are renters, how we evaluate and prioritize is going to reflect the makeup of this body. So it's conceivable that a district like mine, that has over seventy percent renters, might have their priorities and their issues overlooked, because this bigger body does not have a strong enough voice to articulate those concerns. I mean, and, I mean, that's a scenario that could possibly unfold, assuming that this is the makeup that's going to move forward. And I do get it, believe me, Councilman Brahan, I do get it. I do want to see participation by our communities, leadership in our communities. I think it's dearly important. But I have a hard time putting the kind of weight that seems to be suggested here, when the very makeup, the essence of the group, does not reflect the city as a whole. Because you have such an imbalance. In this report, they talk about those who consider themselves workers are essentially only something like thirteen percent. Now, you look at the economic profile of our communities, how many are actually living at that worker bracket? Our teachers are not considered workers because of the income they make. Some of our firefighters are considered workers because of the income they make. Our police officers, especially when the cost of housing is at half a million dollars. And those are the same folks who are the homeowners. So to me, there's, there's a little imbalance here. And I'm hoping that this body has the ability and the capacity, as we see these recommendations coming forward, that our range of appointees does have a reflection of diversity that Councilman Gruel was speaking to. And I truly respect the participatory nature of this process. But there is a difference in my mind between the participatory activity and the representative authority. Because there is a sense of accountability that goes with that. Uh, so I just needed to express my concerns, given the makeup and given the imbalance that currently exists, for whatever reason. And again, um, this city is going through a lot of pressures. There are many communities where I believe are on the edge. There are folks who are fighting just to keep a roof of their head, and this process has to be taken just as seriously. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Um, Ms. Hahn, and then Mr. Padilla.
Thank you. I understand your concerns. Um, but again, you have your own vote, Ed, and you can certainly appoint a renter, uh, to this commission as, as your appointee. And let's remember, colleagues, this commission, uh, after hearing testimony from renters, from other stakeholders, from people who maybe feel left out of the process, hopefully this commission, uh, will come back to this body with recommendations on how to make neighborhood councils more inclusive and the outreach better to all who reside in the city of Los Angeles. Uh, and again, even at the point where they come back to this body and say, "We put something on the charter for the people to vote," we could actually, at that point, add our own recommendations. I mean, there's nothing to say that we cannot add something to a vote of the people. Maybe we want to change the meaning of stakeholders. We could actually do that. Uh, this is an advisory commission that will present recommendations to this body, and if there is something that needs to be changed in the charter, or a definition of stakeholder needs to be changed, then we could put that to the vote of the people. We could also make a recommendation for changes in neighborhood councils. So this is by no means, uh, the end-all, be-all to, uh, the future of neighborhood councils. This is a process. It's a review. It's a time, hopefully, that people who have felt left out of the process. And I will tell you, there is a lot of people that feel left out of neighborhood councils for one reason or another. And I encourage, um, all those people, um, to really weigh in on this process. And hopefully, all those who will be seated at this commission will take every comment, every recommendation, every, uh, you know, complaint on how neighborhood councils work, thoughtfully look at how they might make recommendations to make it work better in the future. And that's what I am trusting this commission to do, uh, no matter who sits on there as commissioners.
Thank you. We have a few other people. Mr. Padilla will close, but now we have Mr. Rosendahl and Mr. Cardenas.
I just want to take a second or two and, and confirm a little bit here. Renters is a big part of our city, and they're not included in most things. And part of the problem is their sense of ownership of who they are and where they are. It's a challenge. In my district, as I mentioned, to have eight neighborhood councils, majority, uh, if not the absolute, almost all of the people tend to be homeowners. And I appeal to people who will watch this on cable television, that if you're a renter, you've got to get involved in the political process more than you have. You have more at stake as a renter about renters' rights and the opportunity right now of a developer to use the Ellis Act to change the whole dynamic and throw you out. And so I appeal to renters to be part of this process going forward. Ed's right. We have to find a marketing tool to get the message out to them. We need to get them to participate. Saying all of that, though, I'm going to support fifteen-seven and seven as the strategy for us all going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas.
Yeah, um, being that, that the number Bernard Parks was talking about, a majority, a simple majority would be fifteen. My friendly amendment was thirteen. Uh, and the magnitude is, as some of the members have been expressing to me, uh, as I even said earlier, this is about the entire city. to me, as I even said earlier, this is about the entire city. Then I'd like to amend my friendly amendment to say, a simple majority of 15 would be required for a quorum. If that's okay with the author and the semi-author or what have you, I don't know what order it is, but that would be my friendly amendment.
No objection? If there's no objection, that'll be accepted as friendly. Mr. Padilla to close.
To close? Okay. So, we having fun yet, colleagues? And I do think that we're better off for the conversation and the discussion that has taken place today. It's a reflection of the several conversations that we had in committee. I know there were several hearings before I joined the committee when Mr. Rosendahl was chair, and they considered this item numerous times. Just since February, we had one, two, three, four, another five considerations of this item in committee. So, you can see how, at least at the committee level, we had a thought process and a deliberative process on all of these issues. The biggest piece was the composition of all of this. I just wanted, in closing, thank you all for sort of getting to that point where we're all more than discomfort. This is truly a consensus plan for the composition of the commission. But to try to put, put it back in context here, because I had the great fortune to be elected to the council in 1999 on the same ballot that the voters of Los Angeles adopted this new charter. And the voters of Los Angeles, with a significant margin, said, "Yes, we want to create these neighborhood councils." And between 1999 and 2001, it was a tough task, but a good task, for this city council, all of your predecessors and I, to go through the establishment of the departments, the general manager selection, the creation of the commission, the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners, the guidelines and criteria for the organizing of neighborhood councils, the certification process for neighborhood councils. And in 2001, when several of you joined the city council, in short order, we were actually voting to certify or to recognize the commission certification of the first neighborhood councils. And I remember being down in the Harbor area with Wilmington. And so, here we are, five years after the first neighborhood councils were certified. This is now 2006, and I think if, if we're all asked separately and individually and even privately, we'd all agree that the city's better off for these neighborhood councils existing now and being active. Does it mean that we're perfect? No. Does it mean that neighborhood councils can't do a better job? No, and they'd be the first to recognize that. Does it mean that we, as a city family, can't do a better job in working with neighborhood councils, supporting neighborhood councils? No, I think we'd all acknowledge that, too. And that's what this commission is all about, assessing, analyzing, reviewing how the neighborhood council's movement citywide has evolved and where we are today and how we can move to a better place. I want to point out language in the, in the report that speaks to the spirit and intent of this commission, being specifically to provide recommendations on how to improve the neighborhood council movement, be it through additional training for its leaders, through recommendations on improvement of outreach, analyzing the relationship between neighborhood councils and council offices, neighborhood councils in the mayor's office, neighborhood councils in departments. It's all on the table. But as we just had a significant and lengthy discussion on the composition of the commission, who should appoint and how many members and what perspectives and point of view should be around the table, I just want to remind us all of the big picture here and what the spirit, intent, and the mission, in my opinion, is for this commission that we're about to create. So, thank you all for your inputs. Thank you all for your support, and thank you all in advance for your timely appointments of commissioners to represent your district and for their attendance and their active involvement over the course of the next year.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, will you please go through the complex additions that we have, if you have followed them tightly, so we all know exactly what is before us? Thank you.
Counsel has before it a majority report from the Education Neighborhoods Committee, and there is a minority report that has been submitted. It's for information, and it has not been moved. If it is moved, it would need a, two votes, question of whether to substitute the minority for the majority, and then it would be voted on. And then there is also motion 36C, which has language to be adopted in lieu of language contained in the minority report. It's on the motion, but I under, I believe Mr. Padilla said majority.
I think what we did is we modified Ms. Hahn's amending motion as, as we had agreed, and that becomes an amendment to the majority report, which stipulates all the other technical components of this action. I think it's, it's accepted as a friendly. Mr. Cardenas' comments and requests vis-à-vis quorum issues, et cetera.
And also ranking the, the appointments and option to rank. So, those were all considered friendly. So, then 36C would be amending the majority report.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody unclear about any of that? If not, let's open the roll.
Uh, miss, excuse me, Mr. President. Do you wish to vote on 36C first and then vote on the majority report as amended?
Sure. Let's do 36C first. Okay. Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay. That is approved. Now, majority port as, report as amended. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved, and we'll go forth with.
And, Mr. President, just technically today, colleagues, what we're doing is asking our city attorney formally, officially, to draft an ordinance that reflects what we all agreed to today. I'm scheduled, I'm scheduled to be absent this Tuesday coming up, so I'd ask that we then continue the balance of the item until Wednesday. And if that's sufficient time for our city attorney to bring back ordinance language for our consideration, then we can act on ordinance first reading this Wednesday coming up.
We can do that.
Great, and we'll continue then the balance until Wednesday. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we will reopen a public comment. I understand Mr. Dogg is with us now. Mr. Zuma Dogg, if you'd like to speak, you have two minutes for your public comment right now.
Hooty-hoo! It's Zuma Dogg, a public advocate. Zuma Dogg's my name, AKA the plaintiff, y'all, because I just had my civil rights violated right here in City Hall. Please listen, very important. I hope we're getting a better democracy in Iraq than I just got right here in the rotunda, y'all. I'm talking to the people right here watching. I need a civil attorney. Zuma Dogg, Z-U-M-A-D-O-G-G, because I'm twice the G you'll ever be, you feel me? I'm looking for a civil attorney. Hit me up on my website, because I just had the police, I was walking in, I was in the rotunda right now with my video camera filming my fine visit to City Hall. A police officer walked right up. He said, "Stop what you're doing. You have to leave." I said, "Well, you know, I'm filming this," and he said, "You have to leave." I go, "Well, can I just stop right now and be quiet?" And I was, oh, by the way, y'all, I wasn't even talking loud like this, y'all. You have 100 people protesting equal pay, equal work. They get to stay. I got footage right here, so he threw me out. He called a Code Six. So, then my friends showed it to the lieutenant. He said, "You can let Zuma Dogg back in here," because he wasn't doing squats, he legal, y'all. So, I had to call errands for Bill Rosendahl's office. Bill Rosendahl had to get all up in the piece, and then I called my representative, Stan Muhammad, y'all. And so, then they said, "Yes, Zuma Dogg, come back in and say what you want to say." It was going to be about Venice Beach, y'all, and the fact that I can't sell my T-shirts no more, and they arrested shape on the man, but now it's about, "I'd like to contact everybody looking." Civil attorney, Zuma Dogg, AKA the plaintiff, y'all. It ain't right. And also, I was at Venice Beach on Sunday, playing my music at a reasonable volume. The police said, "Turn it down." I said, "Excuse me, I'm contractually legally allowed to play at this volume. I'm well below that volume." He said, "I agree you are, but if you don't turn it down, we're going to get you on something else." That ain't right, y'all. It's Zuma Dogg. Right now, I'll take a little entertainment for all the fans at home, y'all, to just say this. You've got to be a public advocate and stand up for real, though. Because you can't tell by the way I use my walk, I'm a woman's man, no time to talk, music loud, my women, woman, been kicked around since I was born, staying alive. Oh, where you walk? Be careful where you walk in the city, y'all. Zuma Dogg, AKA the plaintiff, you feel me?
Thank you very much, Mr. Dogg. And that closes our public comment for a second time for today. And, Madam Clerk, do we have any housekeeping?
Mr. President, you still have item number one from the special meeting. That was called special. Do you wish to recess this meeting and go back to that?
I'm sorry. So, we have special item one. Who is that called special by? I'm sorry.
That was called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks, we have a special item number one?
I'd just like to know how to download that before we get started.
We'll, we'll get you hooked up. Don't you worry.
Put that on my iPod. Let me ask the city, the CAO representative to come up, please.
You didn't just say an iPod, did you, Mr. Parks?
Yes, it.
I'm very impressed.
I read that on a.
Very impressed.
I read that on a bulletin. I don't have one. Have a microwave, though.
I would just like to, this has been on the agenda for a long while. We did something on this back in '04-'05 budget. So, could you give us just a brief analysis of what this issue is and what we're going to be asked to approve today?
Okay. The, originally, yeah, the program, the bond assistance program, and give you a little bit on that. My name's Victor Parker. I'm with the City Administrative Office Risk Management. And originally, the program was approved in the '04-'05 budget, and again, it's set up to assist small contractors in getting contracting, getting bonding for city contracts. And that's always been an impediment to small businesses in the city and dealing with the city is getting that bonding that's required by law. So, that's when the program was set up in '04-'05. Recently, we came to counsel to get approval for a bond guarantee ordinance, and we set that up in December of '05, and it became an ordinance in '06 of February. And this, before you today, is relative to a line of credit for the program. And in this is in the case of when we go through the counseling and do everything with the contractors to get them bond-worthy, there are some times where insurity companies will ask for a partial bond guarantee from the city. In order to do this, we're setting it up through this vehicle of doing the ordinance to set up the guarantee fund, and now we're doing a line of credit, which is a banking instrument that the sureties prefer. So, that's what we're, we're doing here today.
And what is that line of credit? What is the amount?
It's a $4 million line of credit.
For the city of L.A.? And then what is, is there a cap per applicant?
Yeah, there's a, a cap on the program that there would be a guarantee of no more than $250,000. And the program is designed to deal with projects $5 million and under, which is really where the, the most need is for small businesses.
So, the issue today is that the city's, has a line of credit for $4 million that they're going to offer to small contractors, that they then can bond, receive that line of credit of $250,000 to help them in their bonding on contracts under $5 million?
Right. And it's, it's only if, if it's needed. If we've exhausted everything else, we've worked with the contractor, and this is the only, the last thing that, because we've got contractors bonded already without doing these bond guarantees, but in some cases, we'll offer up a certain percentage. $250,000 would be on a large project, you know, a $2 million project, but on smaller projects, it was $100,000, $50,000. You know, it could be $5,000 or $10,000 line of credit.
Now, will this program go beyond the fiscal year, so it's, it's in place forever, or is it something we have to come back and fund each year?
Uh, no, it's currently funded, and it continues on in the '05, or, excuse me, the '06-'07 budget. We've expanded the program to general fund projects, because this originally was a sewer construction and maintenance-funded program.
Okay. Even though we're coming today for the line of credit, have we had people use this program so far?
Uh, yes, we've had a total of, we've been only operational for, for a little bit of a, over a year, and just getting the word out to the contractors. And we've had 80 contractors in the program at various stages. I think we've, we're down to maybe about 60 now. We've got bonding for, for five contractors. We've got, we've got currently six contracts pending, waiting for guarantees, with two contractors of actually one city, city contracts. So, it's a, it's kind of a labor-intensive process, but it's a very important one for small businesses, because once they get that bonding, then they can grow their businesses and they can go on to bid on other, other contracts.
Okay. And these are contracts that they're doing business with the city?
Yes.
Okay. Colleagues, I just wanted, it's been a while since we had this back in '04-'05. Just to remind everyone that this is a tool that the city came up with to help small businesses. As we know, the, probably the most difficult thing for small business is the bonding, with the exception of their cash flow. Those are the two things that cause small business not to be successful. So, the city stepped up to bring this forward and to assist. And as you mentioned earlier, the cap is $250,000, but there's so many other small businesses that are need, in need of bonding for $20,000, $15,000, much less than that, that allows them to continue and then grow their business to go from small to hopefully, one day, middle, medium-sized, to hopefully, large businesses in the city of L.A.
Yeah, it's definitely one of the biggest complaints that I get in dealing with contractors who work with the city, is just simply they cannot get bonding. And, and they, if they could, they could do bid on city projects.
The, the other question I have is that, does the, the company that is requesting this service have to be located in the city, or they just have to bid on a city contract and be successful?
Uh, it's currently set up to be open to all contractors that bid on city projects. We, we track geographics and everything else, because we obviously want to help city of L.A. businesses.
Okay. Thank you very much. And also, just for the city attorney, we need to add some language to the CAO report that basically, that the execution of the reimbursement agreement for the line of credit, subject to the approval of the city attorney, as to form and legality. So, we can add that. That was omitted from the CAO report.
It, I would just wanted to mention also that the, the program is, increases the pool of competition on city projects as well, and we've already seen a decrease in bid prices because of that. So, you know, the, the program, we hope that will basically pay for itself in contract savings, and I think that's an important thing. When you, when you increase the competition, and there's a lot of construction projects out there right now, and there's a lot of different public entities doing work, and it's really important that we can increase that competition, and that helps bring down the bid.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, sir. We've been told by Sergeant Arms, we only have seven council members here, and they're not in the back, which would constitute that our quorum has been lost. So, with that.
I just had one more question.
I, I, I'm sure you do have another question that is part of an official meeting. We cannot continue until at least we have the council members back, or if there are none. Hold on one second, please. We'll check and see if they're in the rotunda. If they're not in the rotunda, we will adjourn this meeting. If you'll just hold on one second, Mr. Parks.
Thank you.
I just remind the good, the good actors that are here that constituting being here, you have to check in with the chair, whether that's myself, or Councilmember Grule, or Councilmember Perry, or whoever's in the chair, before leaving the chambers.
Same guys every time.
And that rule is critically important for us to abide by the law. Okay? Is Mr. Zine in the, if Mr. Zine's in the building, we have no. The council members who are excused at this moment are Councilmember Cardenas, Councilmember Labange, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Padilla is excused, but he's here. And Councilmember Rosendahl is excused as well, but he is here as well. So, we thank, we thank both of them for being here, and despite that, we have a number of council members AWOL right now. Those council members who are not excused right now, who should be here, Mr. Zine, Mr. Reyes.
Zuma Dogg.
Mr. Weiss did ask permission to leave, and so he is excused as well. But if, either Mr. Zine or Mr. Reyes, or Mr., yeah, just the two of them. If we can't get one of them in the next couple of minutes, we will adjourn. All right. This meeting of the city councils adjourned. My apologies, Mr. Parks. We've been told by Sergeant Arms that they're not nearby, and we cannot continue to conduct business. So, we will, we have lost a quorum. and we cannot continue to conduct business, so we will, we have lost a quorum.
I'm sorry, you guys.